More than I can understand, I'll rest in your peace. Hallelujah. Can we have our brother Chris Long just come on up and open our service and prayer this morning? How are we feeling this evening? Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Thank you, brother. I was telling Brother Manny today that I sure enjoyed that message, I'm gonna tell ya. I enjoy all the messages. But I got something out of that that I hadn't thought of before. And that's that, you know, we're all ready to go. I mean, I'm, when I say ready to go, I mean, I want out of here. But I found out last night that it's only time to leave when we got everything we own with us. I ain't leaving one thing behind. I don't care how long it takes. I don't care how much of a hurry I'm in. I'm not leaving one possession behind. Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you, Lord. What a mighty God you are, Lord Jesus. Father, it just thrills our souls, Lord, that you have looked down upon us through the annals of time, Lord, and saw us, a group of people, Father, that come from different places and we're shaped differently, Lord, and different ages, and just all kinds of backgrounds, Father, but, Lord, you decided that's the group of people I want. I want them to hear my word. I'm going to challenge them, I'm going to test them, Lord, that's the way you are. And we love you for it, Father. There isn't any place I'd rather be with any other group of people, Father. For I believe each and every one of us make up your heritage, your ancestry, as we would say, Lord, your lineage. But it's not something that began in time, Lord, it goes way, way, way back. Before the foundation of the world, Lord, we were there, hearing and responding to your thoughts. So we come here tonight, Lord, the second phase of the journey tonight at the meetings, Father, wanting to receive all, everything, totally, Lord, what you have for us tonight so that we can draw closer to you and closer to one another. We love you, we thank you, Lord. We thank you for this place, for the support, Lord, and for the ability to do this for your honor and for your glory, and for the wonderful praise of your name, Father, we come. Bless the ministry, bless the minister, Lord. Anoint the hearers, Father, to receive directly from your throne. For your honor and your glory, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, brother. Oh, just give the Lord a good hand clap of praise. Thank you, Lord. Oh, when you're walking, sis, hallelujah. Oh, when you're walking through the valley, there are shadows all around. I will not fear, God will guide you. He will keep you safe and sound. Lord, you promised you'd never leave me nor forsake me. And his word is true, God is good all the time. He put a song of praise in this heart of mine. God is good all the time. And through the darkest night, your light still shines. God is good, my God is good all the time. Yes, we were sinners, so unworthy. But for us he came to die. But filled us with his Holy Spirit. Now I will stand and testify. Lord, your love is everlasting and his mercy will never end. God is good all the time. He put a song of praise in this heart of mine. God is good all the time. Through the darkest night, his light still shines. God is good, my God is good. Sing it one more time. God is good all the time. He put a song, and it's a praise in this heart of mine. God's still good all the time. Through the darkest night, your light still shines. God is good, God is good. So you may be walking through a valley this evening. You may be walking through a valley. Oh, there's shadows all around. Don't fear, church, 'cause he will guide you. And he will keep you safe and sound. Oh, he promised he'd never leave you nor forsake you. Lord, your word is true. God is good all the time. He put a song of praise in this heart of mine. God is good all the time. Through the darkest night, his light still shines. God is good. Somebody say it. All the time. Oh, Jesus, hold my hand. Lord, I need you, Lord, every hour. And through this pilgrim land, protect me by your amazing power. Oh, hear my cry, oh please. Oh, Lord, look down on me. When I kneel in prayer, I know you'll meet me there. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Well, as I travel through this pilgrim land, there is a friend, he walks with me. He'll lead me safely through the sithings, and is the Christ of Calvary. This would be my prayer, dear Lord, each day. Help me do the best I can. Lord, I need thy light, oh, guide me day and night. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Oh, Jesus, hold my hand. I need you every hour. And through this pilgrim land, Lord, protect us by your power. Hear this cry, oh please. Oh, Lord, look down on me. When I kneel, Lord, I know you'll meet me there. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Let me travel in the light divine that I may see the blessed way. Keep me that I may behold thy auto redemption songs today. I will be a soldier brave and truly, ever firmly take your stand. As I onward go and daily meet the foe. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Jesus, hold my hand. Lord, I need you every hour. Through this pilgrim land, protect me by thy power. Hear this cry, oh please. Oh, Lord, look down on me. When I kneel in prayer, I know you'll meet me there. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. And when I wander through the mountains for the setting of the sun, lead me safely to a land of rest, I a crown of life have won. I believe, dear Lord, I may reach that rolling strand. 'Cause there's no other friend, Lord, on whom I can depend. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Oh, Jesus, hold my hand. I need you every hour. And through this pilgrim land, protect me by thy power. Hear this cry, oh please. Oh, Lord, look down on me. When I kneel in prayer, I know you'll meet me there. Blessed Jesus, hold my hand. Oh, hallelujah. I'm gonna need your help this evening to sing it as loud as you can. You know you've praised the teams while you're on the football field or whatnot, right? I want the kind of singing that makes your neighbor nervous. So just look to the side. So just look to the side, look to your left, and look to your right and say, "I'm sorry." But we're gonna sing a song this evening. Might have to make your neighbor nervous this evening. Hallelujah, because he's God, and my God is still God. Hallelujah, and he's God in everything. Praise the Lord. Uh-oh, Sister Kayla gave me the sign. Praise the Lord, well, we'll sing it anyhow, amen? Hallelujah. Well, he's God in the Father, he's God in the Son, he's God in the Holy, he's God all three in one. I know God is God. He don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. He's God if you love him, he's God if you know, he's God if you're serving, he's still God if you don't. I know God is God. My God don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. He's God in the pulpit, he's God in the back door, he's God in the amen corner, and God all over the globe. I know God is God. My God don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. He's God that heals cancer and God that heals TB. He's God that heals heart trouble. I know that he will heal me. I know God is God. My God don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. I remember the day he saved me from all my sin and shame. I came out of that water baptizing Jesus' name. I know God is God. My God don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. I have a right to praise him, a right to worship him too, because I saw my name revealed in that book. I know God is God, and he don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. He was God in Moses, he was God in Paul II, he was God in William Brenham, he's God in me and you. I know God is God, and he don't ever change. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. Well, they call us holy rollers, they're always making fun. I'm glad I got the Holy Ghost, I'm living in the sun. I know God. Oh, praise him if you've got the Holy Ghost. I know God is God, and Jesus is his name. Well, up in Sabino Canyon, down came a soul. He came out of that mountain with the faith of the Lord. I know God is God. My God don't ever change. I know God is God, Jesus is his name. Well, he's God in the first, he's God of the last, he's God of my future and of my past. I know God is God, and he don't ever change. I know... Oh, leave that one up there one more time, brother. Hallelujah, he's God of the first. Well, he's God of the first, he's God of the last, he's God of my future and of my past. I know God, he's God, he don't ever change. I know God is God, Jesus is his name. Hallelujah. What's his name? A little louder this evening. Turn to your neighbor, tell them, "Jesus is his name." Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Jesus is his name, nice song, brother. I'll praise the Lord, hallelujah. We don't want to keep you standing too long, you can have a seat. We don't want to get too hot, but, uh... Praise the Lord. Uh, we just, uh, we had a few specials this evening, praise the Lord, so we'll get to those. But we had some prayer requests and some announcements that we'd like to go over. Uh, it says, well, the first announcement says, "If you do not or did not get a t-shirt last night, it says, "We will be having some set up after service." So, uh, is there a specific person? Uh, if you would like the opportunity, you can talk to Sister Vanessa Baca, yes, or Sister Shannon. So, uh, Lord bless you, and we'll just be blessed, hallelujah. So we did have some, some prayer requests this evening. It says, "Would you please pray for our deacon, Brother Leo?" Says that the Lord just give him a healing touch from head to toe. Says, "Lord bless you, and Lord thank you." Also says, "Would you please pray for Brother Andrew Baca?" Says that the Lord have his perfect will in his life. So, praying for the Lord's perfect will in our brother. Also says, "Would you please keep my Uncle Bob in prayer?" Says he is in the hospital, uh, checking his heart. So, we'll keep this from Sister Shannon, her Uncle Bob's in the hospital, just checking in his heart. So, we just want to make sure that, uh, we pray for Uncle Bob. Hallelujah. Brother Jeremy Schreiner, would you come on up and pray for our prayer request, brother? I had one more prayer request, says, "Would you please keep Brother Omar Avila in your..." Avila, I'm sorry. In your prayers, it says, "He is in the hospital for seizures and is now on dialysis." So, just... Brother Donald Bendabout. So, keep him in prayer also, uh... He's gonna have an open heart surgery next week. This is a brother in Oklahoma, so we'll keep him in prayer also. Brother Torrance, uh, Brother John and Sister April's dad, just keep him in prayer as well. So, we'll take those to the Lord in prayer if we just all stand and take the needs to the people also. Our ties and offering, my brother, if you would. Amen, let's just bow our heads together and pray. Father, as we come before you once again this evening, Lord, it's a privilege to be together, Lord, with brothers and sisters of like precious faith. And, Lord, I know that that statement has said, has said a lot in prayers, but, Lord, we mean that in our hearts. Lord, there's so many battles that are going on, but we can come together and we can get beyond that for a moment. And, Lord, just rub shoulders with one another as it were, Father, that are fighting the, the fight in, in the foxholes around this area, Lord Jesus. But God, we come before you with these needs, Lord, that have been mentioned. And, Lord, before they were even written on paper, you knew exactly what they were and what they were needing and what they were going through. So, Father, they have been mentioned, Lord. And, Lord, I'm sure, Father, the hands, Father, that would be lifted tonight, God, that would say, "Lord, we have a need." God, you're already working on it. There's so many testimonies that we can look back at in our own life and other lives here. Lord, that, that maybe we were sitting in a moment, we were like, "Lord, I don't know how we're gonna get through this situation. I don't know how we're gonna get through certain things." And then, all of a sudden, something happens, Lord, and we look back and realize, "Father, you were already working on it before we even went into the situation or circumstance." And I believe that you are the same yesterday, today, and forever, Father. So, these needs that are mentioned is not too hard for you. So, we give them to you now, we lay them at your feet and say, "Lord, as your will would be, Father, we, we recognize healing power, Father, in all of the needs." As our brother said last night, "If your purpose was for us to be sick, then you defeated your purpose on Calvary, Father." So, we know that your purpose is for our healing and our victory tonight, Lord. So, God, we just thank you for meeting these needs already, Father. We sing the song, it's already done, and we mean it in our heart. Father, the ties and the offerings, Father, that will be taken up. Lord, we know, God, that you will bless it for your intended purpose. God, we ask again, Father, for the ministry, Father, tonight, God. Our Brother Doug Baker, Lord, we ask that you would just give him strength, Lord, and that our hearts would be open to receive. Bless this church, the pastor, Father, and each and every one that is here, all the visitors, Lord, that have made their way here, God. We ask a special blessing in their lives tonight once again. And we'll just be careful to give you honor, praise, and glory for it all. And the bride says, "Amen." God bless you. Oh, blessed assurance, Jesus is mine. He's been my fourth man in the fire, time after time. Born of his spirit, washed in his blood. And what he did for me on Calvary is more than enough. Because I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Perfect submission, all is at rest. I know the author of tomorrow has ordered my steps. So, this is my story, this is my song. I'm praising my risen King and Savior all the day long. Because I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Oh, I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Well, I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him, that's why I trust him. I sought the Lord, oh, he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him, that's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Oh, I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Perfect submissions. Perfect submission, all is at rest. Brother JJ, I know the author of tomorrow, Lord, in my steps. So, this is my story, this is my song. Oh, all the day long. Yes, I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never... Brother Gilbert. He will never fail. Sing it one more time, "I trust in him." I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He... I sought the Lord, he just didn't leave me there, he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, yes, he answered. I sought the Lord, he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him, that's why I trust. I sought the Lord, yes, he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, he heard, and he answered. I sought the Lord, he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him, that's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God. Amen, if you trust him, praise him.
Testing, testing.
Testing.
Test.
Test.
He would be a counselor. Almighty God, and the breads are peace. The promise talks that He would be our Father. And would love us with the love that would not cease. Well, I tried Him and I found His promises are true. He's everything that He said that He would be. The finest words I know could not begin to tell just how much Jesus really means to me. For He's more wonderful than my mind can conceive. He's more wonderful than my heart can believe. He goes beyond my highest hopes and fondest dreams. He's everything that my soul ever longed for. Everything He's promised and so much more. More than amazing, more than marvelous, more than miraculous could ever be. He's more than wonderful. That's what Jesus is to me.
I stand amazed when I think the King of glory would come to dwell within the heart of man. Oh, and I marvel just to know He really loves me when I think of who He is and who I was. For He's more wonderful than my mind can conceive. He's more wonderful than my heart can believe. He goes beyond my highest hopes and fondest dreams. He's everything that my soul ever longed for. Everything He's promised and so much more. More than amazing, more than marvelous, more than miraculous could ever be. He's more than wonderful. That's what Jesus is to me. Oh, for He's everything that my soul ever longed for. Everything He's promised and so much more. More than amazing, more than marvelous, more than miraculous could ever be. He's more than wonderful. That's what Jesus is to me.
Amen. God bless you. Such a wonderful privilege and opportunity to be back here together with this- the body of Christ here and to worship the Lord. And just thinking today how wonderful it is to get together and have fellowship. Only pointing to that wonderful day when we'll all step back into eternity and see our Lord face to face and have fellowship one with another. Amen. May God bless you.
Why should I feel discouraged? Why should the shadows come? And why should my heart feel lonely? And long for heaven and home? When Jesus is my portion, a constant friend is He. His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me. His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me. Oh, I sing because I'm happy. I sing because I'm free. For His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me. I sing because I'm happy. I sing because I'm free. His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me. We sing because we are happy. We sing because we are free. His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me. We sing because we are happy. We sing because we are free. His eye is on the sparrow. And I know He watches me.
Amen. God bless you.
We'll just keep you standing as we change the order of service. We'll sing that song in D. It's hallelujah. Welcome, Holy Spirit. Hallelujah. Oh, welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in Your presence. Fill us with Your power. Live inside of me. Oh, You're the living water, never dry and fountain. Comforter and counselor. Just take and be control. Oh, welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in Your presence. Fill us with Your power. Live inside of me. We lift our hands to worship You. Holy Spirit, Holy One. Come into this temple and hold us in Your arms. Oh, welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in Your presence. Fill us with Your power. We lift our hands to just give Him praise this evening. Hallelujah. Oh, we lift our hands to worship You. Holy Spirit, Holy One. Come into this temple. Hold us in Your arms. Welcome, Holy- We are in Your presence. Fill us with Your power. Lord, live inside of me. Hallelujah. Amen. You may have your seat for a moment. God is so good to us. It's good to be in the house of the Lord one more time. Just worshiping and lifting Him up on high. Good to be praising God with everybody here this evening. Just had a wonderful, wonderful time last night. I was just, what a blessing. Our brother Isaac Hatfield got out of the way and preached the message going all the way. I'm gonna ask you a question. Are you going all the way? Hey, you know what? In the middle of the road, he gets tired, but don't lay down and fall asleep in the middle of the road. Get up and keep marching on and let's go all the way. Amen? So you could imagine just how heaven's gonna be with all you good-looking people there. Man, I tell you what, we're gonna have a good time. We're gonna have a good time. And so we're blessed one more time this evening. I had mentioned yesterday that Saturday, we might be doing the announcing of the ministers, but I went ahead and decided to do that tonight because I know that some people gotta get back to their church. So I wanted to just let you know the ministers and their wives that are here this evening. It's a blessing to us to support us and to be here, to be praying and, you know, that we could all be in one accord. There's so much fighting, so much bickering, so many decisions going on. You know, when you could get these ministers together and just have a good time, you know, you know the Holy Spirit's here, right? So that being said, just one more thing before we get started. I want to say God bless to our sister April Torrance out there. I know that she really, really wanted to be here, but you know, she had to stay back and watch over her father-in-law. So God bless you, sis. We know that you're watching and we're praying for everything. Amen? So we love you here. Also, I think that's it. So we can get started with the brothers that are back here this evening. They just get the mic. When I give it to you preachers, no preaching. We're gonna have enough preaching tonight. But just announce who you are, your evangelist, pastor, or you know, what church you come from. And be sure to let everybody know if you have a wife that you're equipped with a wife. Because Brother Ruben let everybody know in Ohio that he came equipped with a wife. So you know what? If he could've given us anything better besides salvation, right? He would've done it and he gave us a good wife. Well, you know what? I better get started with me. Brother Manuel Salazar, pastor here of Word of Life Fellowship to these wonderful people that have done everything that they could put up with me for all these days to get this put together. So keep them in prayer and, you know, hopefully they don't throw me out at the end of the services. But we love them. We're doing everything we can for them and we want to see them on the other side, right? So that being said, my wife is Sister Shannon. She's outside somewhere doing something. Word of Life Fellowship, the pastor. And let's go ahead and start with you, brother. Can you just stand up?
God bless you, Brother Isaac Hatfield. I tell the brothers the other day, my wife not here, she's the better half of my ministry with her singing. But I still call her Bethany Lawson on accident sometimes, so that's pretty bad.
My.
True Word Tabernacle, Bluffton, Ohio. Amen. Evangelist. God bless you.
Wonderful.
So I'm Brother Joe Adams from Louisiana for the Temprus Church. And my wife Jessica's here with me and it's been told around-
Have your wife stand up.
Wife, would you please stand up?
Wonderful.
So it's been said that she's two-thirds of my ministry. So I don't know what that says about the preaching, but the singing's really good. We're honored to be here with you this weekend.
Wonderful.
Brother Josh Martin from Pawnee, Oklahoma. New Life Outreach. Brother Wendell Martin's my pastor. My wife Loretta. My two kiddos are with me. So God bless you. Have y'all stand.
Wonderful.
Miguel Gonzalez. I'm a minister there in Pawnee, Oklahoma. Wendell Martin's my pastor. And I brought my equipment with me.
Wonderful.
Amy and children. God bless you this evening.
I brought my lovely wife Sharon Smith. My name is William Smith. I'm the pastor there in Cholo, Arizona, Pinetop, Arizona. God bless y'all.
Wonderful.
Brother Richard Douglas from Kings Mountain, North Carolina. Go to Brother Josh Bennett Church, Apostolic Tabernacle. And I'm so pleased to be here. I'm glad to have my wonderful wife. If she'd stand up. Regina Douglas.
Wonderful.
God bless you.
God bless you. I'm Brother Dale Smith, pastor of North Country Christian Fellowship in Flagstaff, Arizona. I'm here with my darling wife, amen, Joanne. She's nine-tenths of my ministry.
Nine-tenths.
God bless you all. I'm Brother Chris Apodaca from Denver, Colorado. And my lovely wife here, which they look like twins, her and Sister Becky, but this one's my wife. And I would like to- I would like to introduce my younger brother in the corner. He's a former minister. Brother August Apodaca.
All right. Wonderful. God bless you.
God bless you. I'm Sam Parker. I'm the pastor of Word May Pledge Assembly in Bentley, Kansas. This is my wife Bethany. We're very happy to be here with you. God bless you each one.
Wonderful.
Amen. God bless you. I'm Brother Jeremy Schreiner from Emerilla, Texas. Pastor there. This is my lovely wife, Sister Hannah. Yes, you have to stand. God bless you.
Praise the Lord. Oh my.
Hallelujah. Why were you so quiet?
That's my pastor, Brother Jeremy Schreiner. And I'm Brother JR Reek from Emerilla, Texas. This is my lovely wife Amber. And we're just happy to be here to worship the Lord together with you. Amen.
God bless you, Brother Chris Long, pastor of Life Tabernacle in Cottonwood, Arizona. And I am fully equipped.
Get to make my wife real nervous now. So in Oklahoma, I was there and I said, yes, I come equipped. We have our son Elijah. And now we got more equipment. Praise the Lord. We have little Zoe.
Little Zozo. Wonderful. Praise the Lord. We got Brother John Barnes and Sister Jane Barnes, guitar pianist right there. They've been here longer than I've been here. They're dedicated to the Word, to the Lord. They love Him. And we appreciate them with all our heart. God bless you guys. Thank you. Sister Kaylee Torrance. She's here from Oklahoma and originally from here. But you know, but she comes and helps us out. We really appreciate her. She's totally family, so God bless you. Just thank you for coming and helping us out. We can't forget my dad. He's- I'm not forgetting you. I promise.
Lord bless you all and welcome. Man, it's just lovely to see all of you. I mean, I did my heart just- In fact, I'm gonna start tearing here pretty quick. Oh my goodness. My name's Leo Salazar and I'm a deacon here in the tabernacle and I preach wherever I can. And I love you all. God bless you all. God bless you. Oh, my wife. I better not forget her. Honey, the prettiest woman. If you guys look, she's the prettiest woman in there.
Come on.
Sister Evelyn. That's my wife. We're gonna celebrate 57 years of marriage.
My.
This year. God bless you all.
Wonderful. Wonderful. I know that Brother Doug will announce Sister Jennifer, but Sister Jennifer, God bless you. We certainly love you. My wife loves you more than you'll ever know. So you know, when you killed the buffalo, you're her hero. And you know, she wants to be just like you. So we certainly appreciate you. This evening, Brother Doug will be preaching for about five minutes and then he'll get out of the way. Then the Holy Spirit will take over. But I want to just thank him for being a good friend, for being faithful. You know, a lot of people out there say that they're friends and at the end, they might not be. And you know, we get discouraged. The brother was saying, preaching last night, you know, we're not having a pity party like- Brother Jewel would say, woe is you, woe is you me. And you know, sometimes we all fall like into that and the devil's telling us all these things. And last night, we get an inoculation of a preaching that says, you know what, devil? Just get thee behind me, right? And so we- And so we, we're just blessed to, to be friends with Brother Doug and, uh, you know, that, uh, that his people love him very much because most of his people came up. Tucson is in the house. And, uh, yeah, Brother Joseph Salinas was saying, brother, you know, we, we're, we're showing out here, you know what I mean? So just let your people know that it works both ways. So I'm just letting you guys know. It's not me, but just like, you know, Tucson will treat you good. So, so we, we just had to get that out there, right, Brother Joseph? So, uh, we love him and Sister, uh, Jennifer. Uh, every time we go out there, they couldn't do enough for us. Uh, we've been able to do a little travel with him back in the day, just, uh, talk and just, it's good to have a, a good friend. And we love you, brother. Uh, tonight, have your liberty, whatever it is, tie only. Uh, he knows what that means. And so we certainly appreciate him. How are we gonna be pulling this evening? Amen. Just, if, if you have a need, you know, I, I was just, just speaking to him up in, in the office just a little bit. I was letting him know, you know, what we came out of Catholicism. So we know what bondage is. You know, it's a little different bondage than maybe where you, your denomination, whatever, but it's all just holding you down. And when we were able to come out of her, you know, we were like that eagle that was caged up. And when that, when that door opened up, I mean, I came out hallelujah and praising God. So, you know, some people say, well, you know, it's a little excitable or whatever, but you know what? If you were in bondage and you got free, you'd be excited too. And maybe some of you might be in bondage tonight and you're a little tied and you're still in that cage. But you know what? Jesus Christ is here to open up and set you free. So, you know, uh, we, we appreciate the Lord. We appreciate being happy, being merry, right? Brother Doug said, amen, it sure would be a bummer to get over there and know that you could have had a good time here, right? And, and so we can have a good time in the Lord. We can be reverent. We can be respectful, right? And so we can do all that in the name of the Lord. So let's do that tonight. Let's stand to our feet. I'll stop talking this evening. Oh, welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in your presence. Heal us with your power. Live inside of me. Oh, the living water, ever-drying fountain. Comforting counselor, take complete control. Welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in your presence. Heal us with your power. Live inside of me. Hold our hands to worship you. Holy Spirit, Holy One, come into this temple. Hold us in your arms. Welcome, Holy Spirit. We are in your presence. Heal us with your power. Live inside of me. Amen. Give the Lord a hand clap tonight. Hallelujah. I believe that's the desire of all of us tonight. Amen. Live inside of me. Amen. You may be seated for just a moment. God bless you. So nice to be back together again and, uh, you know, we may never have another meeting like this. Might be the last one. Someday it will be. We know things can happen very fast and there's not much that seems that needs to be fulfilled. You know, the last ones are coming in, I suppose. Um, but we just appreciate these times that the Lord has given to us and appreciate Brother Manuel, uh, his friendship as well and, and Sister Shannon. We appreciate the invitation to be with you. We appreciate the local fellowship. And I'd like us to give a hand to the local church for. It's a, it's a reflection of the, of Christ in the pastor and, and, um, you know, they're just so welcoming and just make you feel at home and, and, um, our song leader, Brother Ruben, you know, he makes it look easy, right? And when they make it look easy, you think, oh, I could do that. No, you couldn't. It's not easy, right? You get up here and, and, uh, what I appreciate, appreciate about him is that he leads worship. So what that means is he gets up here and he worships, right? Whether you do or not, right? But then it just makes it so much easier for you to jump in and, right? And, uh, so we, we appreciate that. It certainly does create a wonderful atmosphere and, uh, makes it easy to, to come and bring the word. Brother Leo, that was a good save. He almost forgot his wife, right? Yeah. So along those lines, Sister Baker, where are you at tonight? Oh, there she is. Would you stand? Uh, Sister Jennifer Baker from Tucson, Arizona. So 44 years, is that right? I didn't mean to, didn't mean to put you on the spot. Yeah. Forty, yeah, 44. Yeah. So it's, uh, thank the Lord for His goodness and His mercy and He certainly is good to us. Amen. Uh, last night was just a piece of the master. It's just a wonderful, wonderful message. And I believe our brother believes it. And, um, I'm, I'm not worried about our brother 10 years down the road saying, I don't believe this. You know, he preached what he believed. Amen. And it was encouraging, very encouraging. Amen. And, uh, uh, we just so appreciate what God is, how God is using his ministry. And if the Lord tarries, that's the next generation of ministry that's gonna continue to give wallop the devil. And, and so, um, we appreciate that so much. I don't, I, I, I'm not much of a preacher. I love the Lord and I love His word and I love to talk about Him. And I love to, I love to share with others what He shares with me. And if it's a help to someone else, then we, we feel like we've succeeded. That's certainly our desire. But, uh, it's, it is intimidating to stand up here tonight with all of these ministers. And, uh, not intimidating in the fact that I don't believe any of you are looking with, you know, wanting to sit on the preacher or pull the other direction or thinking, I wish I was up there. But it's intimidating because any one of you would be a better option up here tonight. But it's fallen our lot to, to bring the word here tonight and, um, um, our brother, um, Richard Douglas. So have we met before? Yes. Okay. I thought we had back in North Carolina, right? Right? But I, I, uh, had forgotten that your name is Richard Douglas, right? So I'm Douglas Richard. So. So, so you must, uh, you must have some Scottish lineage, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have some as well. Sister Baker, her last, her maiden name is Galbraith and they got kicked out of the castle, you know, they, they, they sided with the wrong side, you know, against the stewards or for them. And anyway, um, so we've got something in common, but most importantly, we have the same Father. Amen. Amen. So if you wouldn't mind standing tonight. Help us, Lord. Revelation, chapter five, and we'd like to read 14 verses if you don't mind. Revelation, chapter five, verses one through 14. Yes, thank you, musicians. And I saw in the right hand of him that sat on the throne, a book written within and on the backside sealed with seven seals. And I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, who is worthy to open the book and to loose the seals thereof? All six of them. Right? No? How many seals? And no man in heaven nor in earth, neither under the earth, was able to open the book, neither to look thereon. And I wept much because no man was found worthy to open and to read the book, neither to look thereon. And one of the elders saith unto me, weep not. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, hath prevailed to open the book and to loose the six seals thereof. Did I say something wrong? To loose the seven seals thereof. What's this six-seventh's open business? It's either open or it isn't. There's no mistakes. Well, I only opened it partway and I gotta come back and do the rest. It's open. And I beheld, and lo, in the midst of the throne, and of the four beasts, that's the, the four beasts or four living creatures, which represents the five-fold ministry. So let me reread that. And I beheld and lo, in the midst of the throne and of the four tape machines. And in the midst of the elders stood a lamb, as it had been slain, having seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent forth into all the earth. And he came and he took the book out of the right hand of him that sat upon the throne. And when he had taken the book, the four beasts and the four and 20 elders fell down before the lamb, having every one of them harps and golden vials full of odors, which are the prayers of the saints. And they sang a new song that wasn't in the Only Believe Songbook. Oh, brother, there's, there's no new songs. Well, there's at least one more, right? They sang a new song and we know that our worship is a reflection of our revelation, right? So they sang a new song. Hallelujah. Thou art worthy to take the book and to open the seals thereof. For thou wast slain and hast redeemed us to God by the thy blood out of every kindred. Now that actually means clan. So Brother Douglas, we're, we're okay there. Every clan, Sister Baker, Galbraith too. Out of every kindred and tongue and people and nation, and hath made us unto our God kings and priests. This is his work. This is what he did. It's not what you did. It's what he did. And we shall reign on the earth. Maybe if we keep our fingers crossed. We shall reign on the earth. And I beheld and I heard the voice of many angels round about the throne and the beasts and the elders. And the number of them was 10,000 times 10,000. How many is that? I don't know. That's a big number. And thousands of thousands sang with a loud voice. So they must be kinda, kinda Pentecostal, right? Singing new songs and they're loud and they're worshiping, saying, saying with a loud voice, worthy is the Lamb that was slain to receive power and riches and wisdom and strength and honor and glory and blessing. And every creature which is in heaven, every creature which is in heaven and on the earth and under the earth. And such as are in the sea, and all that are in them, heard I, John representing the bride, saying, blessing and honor and glory and power be unto him that sitteth upon the throne and unto the Lamb forever and ever. And the five-fold ministry said, amen. And the four and 20 elders, the 12 patriarchs and the 12 apostles, fell down and worshipped him that liveth forever and ever. They, they must have had the immature Holy Ghost, right? See, there's two Holy Ghosts. There's the immature one and then there's the stoic mature one, right? They had the immature one. So they fell down on their face and worshipped him. Oh friends, let him do something in your life. You'll fall down and worship him. He's worthy of our praise, worthy of our honor, worthy of all glory. Amen. Let's bow our heads tonight. Father, as we stand before your people this evening, Lord, we do it with, uh, uh, Lord, with a, uh, an element of nervousness, of course, because Father, we realize that if we could have a, a jar and, and in that jar, maybe there's just a few drops of the blood that was shed for us. What a precious thing that that would be. There's no price that we could put upon it. But then, Lord, when we realize that you exchanged that for something one day. And Lord, you, you, you don't ever get a bad deal. You're not a bad businessman. So whatever you exchanged it for in your eyes, in your light, it was worth it. So Lord, we realize what you exchanged that for. And Father, we're standing before a portion of that here tonight, of what you exchanged your very own blood for. So Lord, we ask that you'd help us tonight. Help us guide our lips, Lord, our thoughts. And Father, be with the speaker, be with the hearer tonight, Lord. Take whatever we've heard, teach it to us, Lord. And then most of all, Lord, cause it to live amongst us. Father, we're not just gathering together to discuss things and to have a political rally or something, but we've come to be changed, Lord. One more step to be more like you. Father, we thank you for the wonderful service that we had last night. We thank you for the word that we're still ruminating on, Lord. And, uh, we thank you for all that was done. But tonight, Lord, we're asking for another portion. We've got our cup and our plate, Lord. We ask that you'd fill it up, Lord, that you'd speak to each and every heart, Lord. Father, give us what we have need of and may your word go before us, Lord. May it, uh, Lord, we could come together for a patch-up each time we come together. Uh, nothing, nothing against that. But Lord, we prefer to come together for you to equip us with your word because your word will go before us. And Lord, it'll, uh, your word will fight our battles and Father, you'll give us the victory. And so we ask, Lord, that you just bless each and everyone here tonight, those that are present, those that are listening in, those that might listen in. And Father, we surely give you praise and honor and glory. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen, amen. You may be seated. Hallelujah. So I, I'd like to title the thought here tonight, The Revealing of the Open Book. The Revealing of the Open Book. And we're just gonna kinda take the, a, a look at this from the 20,000-foot level. We took several services at home recently on this. And so we'd like to just, uh, speak on this tonight for, if the Lord would help us. So we know that John was on the Isle of Patmos, uh, uh, and he was carried forward in the spirit to our day. And as we heard last night, uh, he was in the spirit. And if you want to get anything from the Lord, you gotta be in the spirit. Brother Brad taught us that. He said, if you go to a ball game, you want to get in the spirit of, of, of the sport, the baseball. He says, uh, you know, a true, uh, baseball fan, and the word fan is shortened for fanatic, right? He said, a true baseball fan, he says, he's not gonna, when somebody hits a homerun, when the team hits a homerun, he's not gonna say, well, you know, I guess that was okay, right? He, he says, no, he's not a real fan. He's not a true fan. If, if that was his attitude. He said he's gonna jump up and shout and he said if he's got a straw hat, he'll pull it down over him and head will pop up, you know? That's a real fan. Amen. I want to be a fan of him tonight. Amen. We got a lot to praise him for. We got a lot to shout about. And we read the back of the book and the back of the book says, we win and our enemy loses. Amen. So John was in the spirit and as we read in Revelations, uh, chapters one through three, uh, John was taken first through the seven church ages where he saw a panorama of the entire Gentile dispensation. And then he comes, excuse me, he comes right up to the Laodicean church and he hears the pronouncement that was spoken against her. And recall that when the angel, uh, uh, spoke to each church age, there was first an acknowledgement of the good works that were done amongst them. And, uh, and, and then a rebuke was, uh, uh, was spoken for where the church fell short in that particular age. But when it came to the church of Laodicea, there were no, uh, commendations given at all because there were no good works. There was nothing to commend them for. But there was a stern rebuke that was given for all of her shortcomings, along with a space to repent. You know, we, we ministered on that a, a, a while back, uh, the, the gift of repentance. You know, if you just meditate on that a little bit, what a, what a, what a privilege it is. You know, it's one thing to be wrong, but, uh, what if you don't know that you're wrong? Well, we didn't know that we were wrong, or we didn't know what was wrong. Right? So if God didn't show us what was wrong, we couldn't get right. And we would be condemned to hell, right? So what a blessing it is, as our brother was bringing last night, it's not condemnation, what a blessing it is for the Lord to show us where we're wrong, so that we can zealously repent, to repent with zeal, to say, "Thank you, Lord." Because if you hadn't have showed me that, I'd be wrong. But that's your gift to me. Thank you, Lord, and I sure wanna be right, I sure wanna make that right. Amen. So there was a counsel that was also given to those that would receive that correction that was being given to the churches. And those that received this counsel, they will not perish with this last and dying age, but instead, they will escape the wrath that is gonna be poured out on the rejecters of the Word. Then we move on into Revelation, chapter four, which begins, "After this I looked, and behold, a door was open in heaven." Right? So this is after the church ages, and John hears a voice telling him, "Come up hither, and I will show you things which must be hereafter." And we know that this is speaking of the physical rapture of the church, but we also know that it symbolizes what's taking place spiritually at the end of the seventh church age. A bride is being called out of the church of Laodicea, and then is being shown things that are to be. And immediately, John was in the spirit in heavenly places, and he describes the scene that he sees, and you know, it's really the scene of the seventh seal. And he tells us that there's a throne, he tells us that there's one seated upon the throne. He describes the colors of that one that's seated and the rainbow that's round about him, and he tells us about twenty-four elders that are seated, wearing crowns of gold, and he tells us about four living creatures that are about the throne and about a sea of glass, and so we know that these are all symbols, and he's describing them to us, and all these things are the symbols that John is seeing, but these symbols are representing something else. And these things were hidden intentionally, but the wonderful thing about God is, you know, he's so great that he can hide in plain view. He can be right in front of you and hide, and then one day, open your eyes, and you're wondering, "How could I never see that before?" You couldn't see it, 'cause he didn't show it to you. But when he shows it to you, you can't unsee it. You can't ever see it any other way. And then you're just, you're so excited about it, and you're just so stirred up that you think, "I'm gonna go tell my neighbor, I'm gonna tell this one or that." You expect them to get excited too. And then you're just kinda surprised, because it's so simple. And I say all that, because, you know, when the book came open, friends, these things are not supposed to still be mysteries. When it comes open, mystery's over. Right? If it's still mysterious, and you know, a lot of times ministers will get up and they'll preach on a mystery, and when they get done, that was more mysterious than the mystery. And you're scratching your head, and you think, "Well, I gotta have, you know, Brother Smarty Pants explain it," and... Right? Or we gotta, you know, spend weeks and weeks to break this down? No, God wants you to know these things. Right? And he's not holding it back and making us strain to get a hold of it. He held these things back, because Satan would've done great damage had he known these things. So God waits till the right time, the right season. He makes it known, and it's too late for the devil. I almost feel sorry for him, almost. Amen? But he's giving me a hard time, and I wanna give him a hard time. Amen. So once it's revealed to you, it's no longer mysterious. Amen. Don't you love the Lord? So all of these things that John sees are in symbols, but those symbols are to be made known at a certain time. Then in Revelation, chapter five, John sees a bloody lamb coming forth from the throne. Now, in chapter four and chapter five, this is where the denominations think they, you know, have a leg to stand on, making multiple gods, you know, a trinity or a twoity, or whatever it might be. Right? And it shows they don't understand the godhead, right? There's not two gods here. But what we're seeing, you know, when this book went back into the hands of the original owner, the original owner is spirit God. This book went back into the eternities for safekeeping and for holding. Satan couldn't put his grubby, filthy hands on it. Right? But then we have a lamb, which is our kinsman redeemer, our mediator, and he's in time. He's seated in his father's throne right now as our intercessor, but we're seeing him take the book from the one that seated upon the throne. There's not two there. That book is coming from eternity into time. And this work of redemption takes place in time, and your kinsman redeemer exists in time, just like you and I, and he deals with this issue in time. So it's symbolized with him taking a book. You know, he's not a bloody lamb standing up on his, you know, hind legs, and... Right? He doesn't have seven eyes and seven horns. It's all symbolic. This is the same one that bled for you. Same one that died for you. The same one that's interceding for you. Amen. So in Revelation, chapter five, John sees this bloody lamb coming forth from the throne, and he's holding this seven sealed book in his right hand. And a question had went forth previously from a strong angel, and that question was, "Who's worthy to open the book and to loose the seals that are on that book?" And then there's a search that's made throughout all of what we know as time, so every life, everybody that's ever lived, that was living at that time, everybody that would live, every life was examined. Right? Nobody was found that was worthy. And notice, it's not until the end of the last age that this question is even raised. Until this time, this is the time. Amen. So John knows what this seven sealed book is, and we know that he knows, because he weeps as he's told, "No one was found worthy to open the book, to read the book, or to look upon it." And then one of the elders says, "John, don't cry, my brother. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah has prevailed to open the book and to loose the seals." And we know that Paul's church was standing right at the threshold, if you will, of this open door in heaven that John was caught up through. They were standing at that very same door. The first church was ready to cross over, the first church was looking for the coming of the Lord. And we're in expectation of, in fact, Paul even said it this way, "We which are alive and remain under the coming of the Lord," right? So they were ready to cross over, they were ready to unite with their theophanes, they were ready to pick up certain elements of the earth and blend with that theophany, that would become their glorified condition, and then go in the rapture of the church. And Paul told the church exactly where they were standing, as we can read in the book of Hebrews, so we'll just read that here quickly, Hebrews, chapter 12, verse 18. Paul says, "For you are not common to the mount that might be touched, that burn with fire, nor unto blackness and darkness and tempest," and what he's speaking of is Mount Sinai. And our brother was touching on many things that we were gonna touch on here. I just love how the Lord works. I just, you know, there's no copyright on any of this. Amen, it all comes from him. Amen? So we just appreciate how the Lord works and how the Lord moves, so... So they were, the children of Israel and Moses, they were at Mount Sinai, they had forty-nine days previously, they'd had a Passover. Now they're standing here at Mount Sinai, and on the fiftieth day, Moses is on the top, and the Lord himself descends, and the Lord speaks to Moses, he writes with his finger commandments upon stones. And then Moses is to take this law, this covenant of the law, take it down to the people. And it's actually, God is actually on that mountain, he's proposing marriage to his bride, his Hebrew bride. Right? And these laws are, you know, if you think about it for a moment, the laws, they don't have life in them, right? But the law shows you what that true life is gonna look like when it's lived out. You won't steal, you won't lie, you'll honor your father and your mother, you won't serve any other god, so it's showing you what that life is gonna look like, and the children of Israel were being prepared, they were being told what kind of a life they were gonna live once they went into the land, and they had these forty years, which they didn't know it was forty years yet, but they had this time to start, you know, becoming prepared to live a certain way when they come into this land of promise. Right? I hope you're listening tonight. So they come to this mountain, but this was, it was a fearful place to be, it was a scary place to be. There was thunder and lightning, and Moses himself was afraid. Right? It was just a holy god, you know, and the law is coming down. The scripture says, "And the sound of the trumpet and the voice of words, which voice they that heard and treated that the word should not be spoken to them anymore." "Don't speak directly to us, speak through a prophet, we're scared. For they could not endure that which was commanded, and if so much as a beast touch the mountain, it shall be stoned..." No, it's not gonna smoke pot. But the beasts today, they get stoned. "It shall be stoned or thrust through with a dart." And so terrible was the sight that Moses said, "I exceedingly fear and quake." He says, "But you, you are common to a mount, but the mount you're coming unto is Zion, and unto the city of the living God." A city is often typed as a woman. The church ages, all those churches, it's a type of a woman. "Unto the city of the living God, the heavenly Jerusalem, and unto an innumerable company of angels." How many? How many? You'll lose track, it's like looking up at the stars, there's no way, you can't count them. So as we heard last night, there's more on our side than there is on the other side. Amen, and we need to know that. Amen. "To an innumerable company of angels, to the general assembly and the church of the firstborn." So the general assembly, that is, that's the entire church, those that have went beyond us, those that are present. The church of the firstborn, so that, we're absolutely convinced that this is the bride, because she's born again of the Spirit. Right? She is entitled to that, she has the firstborn inheritance. Right? "Which are written in heaven." You know, remember, Jesus sent his disciples out, and he said, "I give you power to, over devils and all these different things," and they came back rejoicing, they were just so excited, and Jesus said, you know, "I saw Satan falling like lightning, it's a wonderful thing, I know what was taking place, but..." But, you know, don't rejoice that the demons are subject to you, which they are, but rather rejoice that your names are written in heaven. "To the general assembly and the church of the firstborn, which are written in heaven, and to the God, the judge of all, and to the spirit of just men made perfect." So that general assembly, it means the public festival, festival assembly, a festal gathering of the whole people to celebrate public games or solemn amenities. So this is the bride of Christ, all gathered together, as we heard last night, at the finish line. Right? In the stadium. Right? They've run the marathon, and they've come up to the very last leg of the race. And now they're getting encouragement from those that are in the grandstands, those that are waiting for us, those that have run their race. And they're saying, "Keep going, keep going, keep going. You're almost there, and we're waiting on you." Amen. You know what, my wife's brother, he was a marathon runner, and he was supposed to be in the, was it seventy-six, I think it was, we were supposed to go to the Olympics in Russia, seventy-six or eighty, I don't remember which one it was, but he trained his whole life. You know, he would get up in the morning and run twelve miles before I even got out of bed. I won't tell you what time I got out of bed, but... This was his whole life. Everything was about running. And so he was prepared for this, and then we boycotted the Olympics, because it was in Russia, and it was during Jimmy Carter's presidency, and so, you know, you can imagine the letdown, and and then he didn't go four years later, because he'd kinda reached, you know, he felt like he'd kinda went past his prime spot, whatever, went off and did some other things, and... But one of the things that he shared with me is that when that runner is running the marathon, it isn't the most talented that crosses over. Right? It's the one that believes they could do it. And he said, "When they run that last part, their muscles are cramping, or..." They might not even have the energy to go, to take another step. But the crowds are, they hear the crowds. We can hear on the other side, they're saying, "Keep going, keep going, keep going, you're almost there." You know, we think, "Man, I can't wait to get to the other side." Well, they're saying, "That ain't the end of it. The end of it is coming back over here and picking up bodies." But they can't do that until we cross the finish line. Right? So what they say is, is that that last stretch, they're running on inspiration. They've got a vision. And that vision is, "I'm gonna cross that line, and that's what's been in my mind, that's what I've been running for." "I'm not in it to get a second prize or a booby prize, or..." "A consolation prize." You know, even the term consolation, we wanna console you, you little baby. You wouldn't press, you're lukewarm, but we wanna console you. Wanna make you... Why? You're not a winner. Right? You're not an overcomer. You took the easy way. "Well, if I don't make the rapture, you know, at least I'll go with the foolish virgin." Friends, I'm not afraid of the tribulation period, and I'm not thinking, you know, I don't wanna be here in the tribulation period, 'cause I'm afraid of it. I don't wanna be here, because he won't be here. And if he's not here, I don't wanna be here either. When he leaves, I'm going with him. And I don't have a Plan B, I don't have a Plan C, D, E. I have one plan. Amen. I'm like one of those Vikings that left the land, and I'm landing on another island, I burned my boat. There's nothing to go back to. Amen, I've got one plan. Heaven is my home. I'm going. I'm going. I'm gonna be there. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." Amen. So Mount Zion, of course, is the bride of Christ, and Paul tells the church that they've come to the place where the tabernacle of the living God is here on the earth in a spiritual gathering. That's where we're at tonight. The throne of mercy and grace, that's here on the earth. The blood is here on the earth. The five-fold ministry is here on the earth. Amen? The saints are here on the earth. Hallelujah! Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." There's a spiritual gathering that's taking place tonight, but it's not like what the world is looking for. It's an invisible union. And they are gathered where the carcass is, where the carcass is, the eagles are gathered. Amen, there's a spiritual, there's an invisible union. There's lots of visible unions out there, but this one's invisible. That means that we can all be together around the world and not be in the same place. And yet, we are in the same place, we are in Christ, in heavenly places, in the Word, in Christ Jesus. Hallelujah, and there's unity there. So Paul told them, they'd come to the place where they are the tabernacle of the living God in a spiritual gathering, and Mount Zion on the earth, of course, is foreshadowing the new city of Jerusalem in heaven that's to come to the earth in the millennium. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." I think I messed up here again. I pulled the... I don't usually tear up people's equipment, but... Hallelujah! You love the Lord? Amen. So John describes to us the grandstands and the spirits of just men that are gathered as they await the body change. And, you know, we know that the first church was the seed church, right? Bear with us. Bear with us. We know that it was the alpha church. And we know that they came right up to the border of the land, but then the church age relaxed and they began to drift, and because of that, they failed to cross over. Amen. Now, the seed church did not relax. The true believer did not relax. Thank you. That's hallelujah. There's a, there's someone that can fix it. Amen. The seed church did not relax, as others did, but they had to go into the ground so that it would bring forth more seed. There was more seed that was to come, right? So as Christ was the original seed and had to go into the ground and then raise up within three days, so did his bride church go into the ground and raise up within three millennia. Amen. So the Bible tells us that there's two churches that grow together in the same field throughout the church ages. And we see that the false church started in the beginning on the right track, but we see that that church eventually falls away, as Paul said that it would. And she's identified in the end as the great whore in the book of Revelations. And the church that started out pure and white ends up naked and wretched and poor and blind. But the crazy thing about it is they're thinking, she's thinking she's fully clothed. She thinks she's spiritually rich. She thinks she has nothing, need of nothing. She thinks she's rapture ready. She thinks all is well between her and her maker. She has judged herself, not by the word, but she has judged herself and she finds no fault within her. And she is deceived into believing that she's worshiping Jesus Christ. But Paul said, instead, she is found worshiping that man of sin who is to be revealed in the last days. And that man of sin, he says, sits in the temple of God, being worshiped as God in the midst of Satan's Eden. And he may have just been seated in the throne. I don't know if this is that one, but this could be that very one. So Satan has achieved his goal in this last age, becoming the god of this evil age. Brother Brown said he never was in any other age, but in this age, he becomes the god of this evil age. Now friends, Satan doesn't care if you're deceived. Satan doesn't care if he gets your worship and you think he's somebody else. He doesn't care. All he, all he knows is he wants your worship. He wants what was, what was to go to the king of kings and lord of lords. He wants that worship, amen, to be diverted to himself. So those that worship him, they don't know they're worshiping him. They think they're worshiping Jesus, but they're deceived. How many knows that? So, he claimed in the very beginning that he would be worshiped by the sons of God, but he never will. He never has been. He never will. They will not worship him because they have the Word and they will not be deceived. Amen? You know, I ponder over things. I kinda look at things. A minister told me one time, he said, "You stare at things and if it doesn't look right, you just keep staring at it until it does." I thought, you know, that's a pretty good description, right? It's not that there's something wrong with what I'm looking at. I just know that my understanding isn't right, that I'm not seeing it right. And it might be thirty years later that the Lord shows it to you, right? So you look at it until it looks right. So I'm wondering, okay, the first eve she fell. We know that she was separated from Adam and we know that Lucifer came and, you know, came to this beast, right, that was, was like a man and shrewd. And he says, you know, "Can I borrow your body?" And he says, "What for?" "Well, there's a woman that I wanna talk to." "What's in it for me?" "Well, you do this, you and me'll go places." He didn't tell him about losing his legs and arms and eating dirt and, right? Yeah, they went places, all right, into snake holes and... Anyway, he said, "I wanna borrow your body because I wanna speak to this woman, right? So if you'll let me speak to her." So, made this deal with him perhaps. He spoke to this woman and told her a lie and she believed it. And she brought forth life, but it was a life of death. Amen? Well, I'll just go ahead and jump ahead. I don't wanna keep you. Amen. Revelation chapter nine tells us about an angel that got kicked out of heaven. And I'm thinking, "But he was already kicked out of heaven, so is this again? What is this?" You know? Chapter nine, and we know him as Apollion, and we see that he's given the keys to the bottomless pit. And, you know, the demons that were bound by the river Euphrates are released. The very same ones that was with Alexander the Great and, you know, Nebuchadnezzar, all these different ones. And, right, they're released and, of course, they go against Israel. Natural Israel drives her into her homeland. And then the prophet of God says, then they turn on spiritual Israel, the bride, and they drive her into her homeland, right? So he's actually doing us a favor. Whether we like it or not is a different story, but he's actually driving us. He's actually fulfilling the word of God by doing that, right? So, they were to have dominion. They were to multiply. And Adam was told, you know, "Subdue, keep things..." You know, I've laid out this model home. I've created this special place called Eden. "I want the rest of the earth eventually to look just like this, but for right now, Adam, you keep this this way. And you take dominion over the fowl and over all the, all the animals and so on and so forth." So how did the, how did the serpent get out of his control? The serpent got out of his place, right? And why did, why did Adam leave his wife, right? If, if he would've stood by her side, she wouldn't have fallen. So the prophet tells us the first eve she fell. He tells us the second eve, the church, she fell during the dark ages. But he says this last eve won't fall, right? And so I'm wondering, you know, simple guy that I am, well, what's different about her? Hallelujah. Well, let's just go ahead and jump in with both feet. Amen. Jesus said, "I'll never leave you nor forsake you." Jesus, he went and died on the cross. He went to hell. I should've went to hell. But he went in my place so that I would never have to experience that. He was separated. The moon refused to shine. The sun turned its back. Oh, every creature left him hanging there, abandoned. Amen. His own disciples, the church, everything. And then he says, he said to us prior to that, "You're never gonna go through this." I don't, friends, I know that we've all been alone. We've had feelings of loneliness. But no matter how alone you are, you will never, ever, ever be alone like he was. He was all alone, and he alone tread the winepress of the wrath of Almighty God. Amen. So when you hear those words, "I'll be with you and even in you," you should take great comfort because he's telling you, you'll never be alone. Amen. So why won't this eve fall? Because he's with you, even in you. He said it that day, and that day is this day, he said. "You'll know that I'm in the Father, the Father in me, I in you, he's in you, and you are in his Word. You are in him." Amen. You are a part of him. You came from him. Eve came out of the side of Adam and then Eve was, the woman was brought back to Adam. And God told him, "You two are now one." Well, they were one. She was the mystery of Adam now being revealed. She was previously hidden, but now she's being made known, right? And together they were one. At Calvary, out of his side came blood, water, spirit. Fifty days later, the spirit of God descended. Amen. You came out of his side. Amen. You were in him. Then you came out, but now he's in you. Amen? You, Christ is the mystery of God revealed. The church is the mystery of Christ revealed. You are that mysterious part that was hidden but is now being made known. So the short to it is, you can't be deceived because he's in you. And he, he will not be deceived. Amen. It's not that we're smarter. It's not that we're better. He's in you. He said, "Father, I thank you. All that you've given me are gonna come." And the devil probably thought, "You know what? He just bit off more than he could chew. He shouldn't have said that, you know? I'm gonna run him ragged. I'm gonna prove him wrong. I'm gonna bury some of these so deep. I'm gonna make this one a prostitute. She's gonna have six husbands." So by the time he comes along, he won't recognize her. But the real husband, the seventh one, recognized the woman at the well. It didn't matter how deeply she was buried. He knew that that was his. That was his seed down on the inside. And he left his disciples, told them, "Don't, don't come with me. I must needs go to Samaria." He knew that he was coming by her path. Hallelujah. So I don't care. He may have buried you in drugs. He may have buried you in alcohol. He may have buried you as a Republican, a Democrat. Who cares, right? He may have buried you as a Presbyterian or a Catholic, as we heard. Amen. But he said, "I, I won't lose a single one. If I have to go through the tavern, if I have to go down the alley, wherever they're at, I'm gonna find them, and when I call, they're gonna come." Hallelujah. You say, "Why did I respond? You couldn't help it. You didn't wanna help it." He called, you answered. You came from him. You're going back to him. You're that hidden treasure that was buried in a field. Amen. But it was buried in you. And he exchanged his blood for that treasure, and he didn't get gypped. Amen. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." Let's go to the back, you know, Revelation nine talks about this angel that was kicked out of heaven. Revelation ten says, "And I saw another mighty angel." So we hear about, you know, the one that everybody's afraid of, the one that's doing all these horrible things. And then, and a conjunction, "And then I saw another mighty angel." But this one wasn't kicked out. He chose to descend from heaven. Amen. Hallelujah. And he came down to the earth and he found a Kentuckian with a seventh grade education that would've been a murderer, that would've drank, that would've smoked, would've done... He said so. Amen. In fact, when he was, when he got shot in the back of the legs with that, you know, he was with Jimmy Poole and the shotgun was loaded and it was leaning against the fence. And they're crossing over the fence. The shotgun comes down. It goes off. It blew away his hamstrings, a good part of the muscles back there, right? He's in the hospital. He's fourteen years old, hadn't given his heart to the Lord yet. And, and he's dying, right? And he, and he sinks and he sinks and he sinks. He goes into the regions of the lost and he, he sees the women that are living in the sixties. He doesn't know it yet. Painted up faces and hears all the moaning and groaning and all that's going on, and he's dying. And so he makes the best case that he can, right? He said, "I never did commit adultery." Okay, you're fourteen. Give it a little more time, right? That, that's his defense. "God saved me. I never did commit adultery." It's true. He didn't, right? But he, you know, he lied, he'd, you know... A man born in sin, just like the rest of us, would've done some of these other things if God hadn't watched over his gift. But it came down to, he said, "God, if you'll save me, I'll serve you." Amen? And we know that he came back and we know what God did and how God got a hold of him, right? Later on, he goes, so this is the regions of the lost. Later on, he goes beyond the curtain of time, right? And there's so many things that we can talk about that took place there, but he said, "I wanna see Jesus." Right? They said, "You can't." Isn't it something? He's a prophet here on the earth. He's telling us everything we need to know. And he's looking over the fence. He's, he's a seer. When he goes the other side, they're telling him a thing or two about a thing or two because they're in their theophanies, right? And so he says, "I wanna see Jesus." You can't. Why not? "Well, because you gotta be judged." So he says, "Well, does Paul have to be judged?" He's, he's trying to look for the best defense that he can. "Does Paul have to be judged?" "Yes." "Well, I preached the Holy Ghost just like he did. I preached the Word just like he did." They said, "We're resting on that. We're depending on that. We're counting on that, right?" They told him, "You gotta go back. Oh, this is horrible. I gotta go back." Yeah, you gotta return ministry. If there was one, that's it. You gotta go back, right? You're gonna go back, and then you're gonna come back here, and then we're gonna go back with you. Oh, friends. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." So Revelation ten, another mighty angel descends. He takes this man and shows us the power of this blood. He doesn't use a beast. God doesn't inhabit beasts, right? He finds a man. He justifies him. He saves him. He sanctifies him. He fills him with the Holy Ghost, and then he shows to us the power of this blood. He shows us the restoring power. He shows us the sin-killing power. He shows us the, how the stains can be completely annihilated. Amen. Then he says to this man, "I'd like to borrow your body." "What for?" "I have a woman that I wanna speak to." And he borrowed that man's body and spoke to a woman, and she believed his word. And instead of bringing forth a life of death, she brings forth a resurrection, which is what the first eve was supposed to do. She doesn't do it. What she does is she says, "That ain't nothing but the truth." Adam speaks. She says, "Yes. Let it be here on the earth as it is in heaven." Hallelujah. Blessed be the name of the Lord. Lucifer said, "I'm gonna get these guys to worship me. That's my goal. I'm gonna get the sons of God to worship me, right? They never will." Isaiah chapter fourteen, verse thirteen reads like this. "For thou hast said in thine heart..." You only wanna criticize a prophet and, you know... This prophet told us what Lucifer was thinking. Not what he said, what he was thinking. "You said in your heart..." I'm discerning the thoughts and intents of your heart. The Word is. Amen. "You've said in your heart, 'I will ascend into heaven. I will exalt my throne above the stars of God.'" That's the sons of God. "I will sit also upon the mount of the congregation in the sides of the north." And what in the world is he talking about? Well, let's let scripture interpret scripture. Psalms chapter forty-eight, verse one. "A song of psalm for the sons of Cora..." Not the Dathan in Cora, Cora. Another one. "A song in psalm for the sons of Cora..." We used to sing this at, we first, first church that we were going to in the message. "Great is the Lord and greatly to be praised in the city of our God, in the mountain of his holiness. Beautiful for situation, the joy of the whole earth is Mount Zion in the sides of the north, the city of the great King." Amen. "God is known in her palaces for a refuge." So Sister Baker and I have had the privilege of going to Jerusalem. It's not, it's not necessary. It's a blessing that we got to do it. I never thought we'd be able to do something like that, but anyway, we went. And people are lining up to go to the Temple Mount, you know? The foundation that the temple was built upon, right? And, you know, we also visited, you know, the Vatican in Rome, right? And, you know, one of them wants you to put a hat on. One of them wants you to take a hat off. And it's like, "Can you guys just get together?" So we had to put on a little yarmulke to go over near the wall, right? The Jews insisted that we put on this little yarmulke, and if you didn't have one, they'd, you know, for five bucks or whatever, they'd rent one out or whatever, or you could buy one. When we went to the Vatican, it was, "Take your hat off," you know? Right? This is holy ground. All right, "One off, one off." People are, are gathered there and they're sticking little notes in the, in the wall and I hope I don't hurt anybody's feelings, but let's get real here, right? People are saying, you know, "Here's a, here's a prayer and if you go over there, could you stick it in the wall? I know God's gonna do something, that's gonna be such a..." Really? He's only gonna answer your prayer at a wall on the other side of the earth that most people will never go to? Don't you know that there's a new covenant? Don't you know that when the veil was written too, he's no longer there? And the temple was destroyed? This is just a wall that that temple was sitting on, right? Well, it is a special place and we know that, uh, it'll remain a special place throughout eternity. But I'm not looking for God when I go to that wall. I'm looking for him wherever I am. Amen? Because that's not his dwelling place, this is. Amen. Hallelujah. So all those names that are written in the Lamb's book will know him for who he is, the devil, and they will not be deceived. The bride of Christ, the elect, living in the last age, instead of worshiping that devil, they will tear his kingdom down all around them. Amen, he got, uh, uh, he wasn't too pleased about the service last night, but we love it. He will have no place in her, she will have no place in him. Amen? But of our Lord Jesus, in that day, we will know that he has a place in us and we have a place in him, and that's this day. A head and a body are uniting together and that head is gonna have preeminence in that body. So the glorious church that started out in the first church age came right up to the border, came right up to the resurrection, came right up to the body change, to the manifestation of sons of God and then relaxed, loosened her grip and began to drift. Once again, the true believer didn't do that, but the, as the age continued on. And by the time she arrives in the last age, she's poor, wretched, naked, blind, miserable, deceived and doesn't know it. Church deceived by the world. And yet she claims to speak for him on the earth. And she now has a God of her own making that will be acceptable to everybody. And she was not faithful to her husband and she becomes instead a great whore. And Paul espoused the church to the word, uh, but he said that a, a beguiling spirit was already creeping in while he was still among them. But thank God that that's not the end of the story. Amen? There's been a little group that has not denied his name, that have been preserved in each and every age. And in this last age, she must come right back to the very same place that the first church stopped at. Amen? In the message of Paradox, Brother Brown says, paragraph 89, he says, "But we're promised according to Revelation 10, according to Malachi 4, St. Luke 22:17 and so forth, that there's got to come an Ephesians to this." It's promised, friends, there must come an Ephesians that these sevenfold mysteries of the word of God must be unfolded. And it's in the layout of the scene age that this takes place. And I believe that we're there, he says. So Brother Branham is telling us, we're right back to the same place where the first church stood. They had the fullness of the word. He says in verse, in paragraph 91, "Now you cannot add nothing to the book or take nothing from it." Revelation 22:18 says so, "Whosoever add one word or take one word, his part will be taken from the book of life." Now we cannot add or take, so therefore we know that Luther could not get to it. Wesley and so forth, the reformers, Knox, Finney, Calvin, on down, so forth, they didn't get it all. But what they had was the gospel truth. They would have stood for the truth we're standing for if they'd had access to it. Amen. But now in the last days, we are given the understanding by the word that we are going to understand it because it'll come in Ephesians to it. And we're here, he says. So the early church came right up to the border of the promised land of the word. They looked over into it, but then they relaxed. In that very same message, in the message paradox, Brother Branham uh, tells us about a vision that he had or, or a dream, one or the other. And he says, uh, he looked down at the map of Palestine and, and he said, "I was two-thirds of the way to the river Jordan. First pole, second pole, third pole's in that land. Third, two-thirds of the way, I'm on my way over there." Then the scene changes and he, he sees a, a, a man jumping, he sees a serpent coming at it and the man's jumping and he says, "What's everybody afraid of?" And that serpent represented death and it was trying to strike him and Brother Branham, uh, uh, you know, yelled at that, at that serpent. And, and he was asked the question, "How would you like to bind that?" He said, "Oh, would I?" He knew what it represented. "Oh, would I?" "But what, what must I do?" Right? He, he was told, well, you know, "You can bind it." He spoke to it, it was bound. He said, "Now you can unbind it." He spoke to it, it was unbound, he spoke to it again, it was bound. And then he says, "Lord, what must I do?" Right? To be able to, you know, literally bind this serpent that represents death. Now friends, if you've got power over death, that's the worst thing that everybody's afraid of. Anything under that, obviously you're gonna have power over, right? So if you can bind that, you can bind anything, right? Amen. And that's a place that we're supposed to get to. And so he said, "What must I do?" And he was told, "You must be more sincere." And I remember the first time I heard him say that, I thought, "Man, I'm just trying to be as sincere as he was when he told he had to be more sincere." Right? Now, he wasn't being told that he wasn't sincere. He was just told that it's gonna have to come to another level, right? And so he tells us, you know, there's noise in the house and the kids are getting ready to go to school and he doesn't wanna wait, so he, 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 he says, "I'm not advising people to do it this way," but he, he said, "I, I needed an answer." And so he opened his Bible and it took him to 1 Corinthians 5, "When you come to this feast." Right, not, "Don't let it be with the leaven of malice and so forth," right? "When you come to this feast," right? So purge out the old leaven, right? And so, uh, 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 we know that that represents crossing over into the land. We know that it represent, the book's gonna come open, right? But in order to receive the truth, you gotta get rid of the lie. You, you gotta be willing to be purged. You gotta be willing to purr, be purged of all your old thinking, your old ideas. Amen? You have to be more sincere, cause you can't take that nonsense into the land with you, right? You're gonna have a new way of thinking when, when you come into there. The fullness of the word, right? So the early church came right up to the border of the promised land of the word and looked over into it, but then relaxed, we know. And the church has now wandered, uh, around in the wilderness over, uh, seven ages, uh, but has now come right up to the border again in this last age. To the border of our promised land, which is the fullness of our inheritance and, uh, uh, you know, the body change and so on and so forth. And we can see through an open door into the land, as we heard last night, by vision, right? We, 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 we have to have a vision, we have to know where it is that we're going. And I'm not a prophet, so how am I gonna have a vision? So God sent a guy that had a pair of eyes and he could see that and then he told us what he saw. And I was just dumb enough to believe him. Excuse me, that sounded flat, I didn't mean it that way, right? I believe that what I heard was the word of the Lord. I didn't have to see it myself because he told me, but now I see it as he showed it to me and I can see it in the word. And now I'm pursuing after that. Amen? I see myself in the vision. You say, "Well, how can you see yourself in the vision?" Cause he's talking about me. You say, "How do you know he's talking about you?" Because everything he's saying describes me. I love him, I wanna unite with him. I wanna go up in a rapture, I wanna stand on the word. I wanna believe his word, I wanna unite with Christ. Oh, we are so blessed, we are so privileged here tonight, friends. I just can't believe the, the insanity of people, you know, uh, trying to find fault with this guy. To this day, to this day, I don't know anybody that talked about Jesus Christ as much as he did. He didn't point to himself. He didn't build a great big Oral Roberts University. Amen? He pointed you to Christ. He was a true friend to the bridegroom, right? We didn't know who the true Christ of the Bible was. We had 800 different Jesuses. Jesus, and Paul said, "I, you know, espoused you to one," right? And he said, "If somebody comes and preaches a different Jesus than what I brought, you might well bear with him," right? So we didn't know. We had a Presbyterian Jesus, we had a Catholic Jesus. We had a, a Pentecostal Jesus. We had a cool church Jesus. Yeah, you can't make this stuff up. There's a, you know, holdouts from the 60s, everybody's gotta have their Jesus, right? Hippies from their 60s, they, they got a little bit of religion, so they come up with the cool church and they wear Birkenstocks and they, they, they can, you know, have Starbucks coffee during the service and they're not gonna get pressured, you know, there's free pony rides for the kids and, right? And, and just, you can wear your ponytail and burn incense, whatever. So there's this church called the cool church, you know? I got a funny bone that I, I need to be careful with. Cause once in a while, I get real close to that line, I don't wanna stumble anybody. But one time, uh, Brother Darrell Ward come out to minister for us. We didn't know one another too well at that time and, uh, and I'd picked him up and we're going to church to the service and so we drive right by the cool church and I start to pull into the parking lot. I can't imagine what was going through Brother Darrell's mind. Cool. There's every kind of Jesus, there's a Santa Claus Jesus, there's a new age Jesus. But then there's the true Jesus of the Bible. You know, uh, uh, I'm sorry to put this to you this way, it's kinda crude, but it's just something that kinda stuck in my mind. Back in the 60s, there was a program on television called To Tell the Truth. And I've always had a problem with, you know, they, they say to tell the truth and then they spend the next half hour lying to you. I thought you were gonna tell the truth, right? And so they, they'd have three, three men or three women and, uh, uh, up there and they're pretending to be one, one person, you know? I'm, I'm John Smith, right? And one of them really is John Smith. The other two are, are pretending. And then they had, uh, you know, three actors or whatever asking questions. And then at the very end, they'd say, "Will the real John Smith please stand up?" Right? And you see somebody kinda getting up and kinda doing a little fake. And I'm like, "Oh, I didn't think it was that one, I thought it was this one." But he's just doing a fake, you know? Just starting to get up and then he sits back down. And then the real one stands up, right? Well, we needed the real Jesus of the Bible to stand up. Not an impersonator, the true Jesus of the Bible. And he's done that and he's doing that. And how anybody cannot see that, how anybody can go back to hogwash and stuff that never tasted good then, how could you go back to that? Your taste is spoiled. Friends, this is more vindicated than anything. God has proven his word more in this age than any other time. You'd have to just want to disbelieve. You say, "Well, I don't believe what happened back then." Well, what if I told you it's still happening? What if I told you that what he did back then, he's still doing today? And if you'll take him at his word, you'll see him do it. This wasn't done in some dark corner somewhere, this is an occult. This is a true Jesus of the Bible, doing what he said he would do. And I love him. Amen. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." So we can see through this open door into the land by vision and we hear a voice calling to us, "Come out of those, come out of that dead denominational husk." Now friends, we all had to come out of something. Some of us had to come out of a so-called message church. We all had to come out and we think, "Oh, well, that, that couldn't happen." Right? We all, we all will be tested. Well, you know, "My family left me and this and that." Well, that's what it means to be a Christian. If you're not willing to leave your father, mother, sister for the gospel's sake, then what good are you? Let him become real to you. And then you'll realize, you know what? I'm, I may be walking alone now, but as we heard last night, I got an inheritance. I'm not even gonna leave a hoof behind. As far as I know, I don't own any cows, but not only am I not gonna leave a hoof behind, you think I'm gonna leave my family behind? Come on, friends. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." Come out of the dead denominational husk, come up higher where we can see the third work of the Lamb's redeeming work unfolded before us. The view's great up here. You know, Revelation 13, or Matthew 13, Jesus tells us he's gonna build a church. First time we hear the word church used. He said, "He's gonna build it, he's gonna place each stone into that church," right? By the revelation of Jesus Christ to each and every one. He's gonna place them in the body. Matthew, uh, 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 excuse me, that's Matthew 16. Matthew 17 starts out, uh, uh, after six days. Peter, James and John, they, they head up to a mountain, right? Well, what's after six days? Seven day. So they go to the top of the mountain on the seventh day and they see the coming of the Lord. They see him in his coming day. They come to the top of the mountain and they see things you can't see at the bottom of the mountain. Those at the bottom of the mountain, they heard thunder and they're still hearing thunder. They come up higher. Come up to the top, the view's great up here. Come up, little eagle. You're a special class of people. You've got a prophetic sense. You can see. When they came up to the top, that thunder, they said, "I heard a voice." But you had to be at the end of the ages, you had to be at the top of the mountain. You had to be at the interface between the top of the mountain and the capstone. You had to be at the place where you couldn't come any higher. The church couldn't take you any further. And it's adoption time. A voice said, "This is my beloved son, hear ye him." Hallelujah. And now he's saying, "This is my beloved bride, hear ye them." Blessed be the name of the Lord. People say, "Well, I don't hear that, all I hear is thunder, I hear a voice." Hallelujah. You know, a, a little while back, there was this, you know, big old hoopla over the cloud and, you know, just making a big issue out of the cloud, right? And, and, uh, you know, was Brother Branham there when the cloud came down or not? You know, if there was no Life Magazine, we would have no, no picture of it, right? And all we have is what he said, right? Moses said, "I saw a bush burning on a, on a mountain and I turned aside and I went over to that bush and it wasn't being consumed and a voice spoke to me and told me, 'You've been given three signs and you're gonna go back and this is gonna be your ministry,' right? And it happened, right? So here's a prophet, he said, "You know, I, I was standing on this mountain and I saw these angels come, it was faster than you could blink your eye and I was caught up by them. And I was told, and I saw things, uh, uh, it's not my own thoughts. And I was told, 'Go back east. You're gonna preach this, the book's gonna come open.'" So he went back east, the book came open. You know, people are smarter, these people that are, uh, uh, that have departed and, uh, made themselves enemies. Why aren't they saying, you know, "He was, he was false," you know, "when he preached on the seals and this and that?" They're smart enough to not argue that, right? He went back east and what he was told would happen, happened. And they're not arguing that, right? So they're arguing about the cloud and, you know, whether, whether he was there or not. Let me ask you this. When Moses saw that bush that was burning, was it burning the day before? I don't care. Was it burning the day after? I still don't care. Well, how do you know it burned? Cause one man told me. I, all I got is one man's word, but then God vindicated it. You know, where we live in Tucson, you know, uh, I could get on the highway and I could start heading towards Lorsberg and I'd see a sign, "Lorsberg, so many miles." Drive a little further, "Lorsberg, so many mi-" I'm gonna get closer and closer. I'm looking at the sign, the sign's leading me- I'm looking at the sign, the sign's leading me to it. Eventually, I'll end up in Lordsburg. Now imagine, I'm in Lordsburg, I've been there sixty years. And somebody comes to Lordsburg and says, "You know what? There's something wrong with that sign. You shouldn't have followed that sign. I don't believe that sign." "Well, wait a minute. You're the one that said, 'Believe the sign.'" Now you're saying, "Disbelieve the sign." "So you lied to me before, but now I'm supposed to believe you?" "You spent your whole life saying this was the truth and now you're saying it ain't the truth." And where am I supposed to go now? "It's okay to drink six beers, but seven is too many." Go back to that slop? "Well, don't you get drunk?" "Yeah, but not as you suppose." "I found the real Holy Ghost wine. I found the real stimulation." And it doesn't cause me to lie. And it doesn't cause me to regret the next day anything that I... And I can remember what I did. Hallelujah! So it never was about "believe the sign." The sign's taking you somewhere. It's taking you to a voice. Can you hear the voice? Believe the voice. Amen? But everybody can't hear it. And I can't help that. I can't unhear it. My sheep know my voice. And another, they will not follow. So that's why when Brother Branham mispronounces things, I don't make that Holy Gospel. I realize that's Brother Branham. And I'm not looking for faults. I'm not trying to point out any faults. But he was a man. And he said he made mistakes. "Oh, but he was mistaken." See, I told you. It's not even logical. I can tell when it's the voice of God. Because that voice is in me. And that voice said, "I'm gonna lead you and guide you." Believe that. Oh, man, I'm in overtime now. I'm sorry. I gotta wrap this up here in a moment. Somebody say "Praise the Lord." So we're told, "Come out of that dead denominational husk. Come up higher where we can see the third work of the Lamb's redeeming work unfolding before us." And we wondered, friends, we wondered how anybody could come to the stature of the fullness of Christ in this evil age. And we had only to look at our own shortcomings, to wonder, "How can these things be?" Right? That were spoken by vision. But when the worthy one was found and when he opened the book, we found out that there were no marks against us in that open book. Right? Now notice, we couldn't look at it, we couldn't touch it. But now, not only can we look at it and touch it, we can eat it and become one with it. Because he made us worthy. We weren't worthy, but he made us worthy. Hallelujah! Somebody say "Praise the Lord." I'm sorry, I just gotta take a little detour now and then. It's nice to have Smith squared here. There's two Smiths here. You know, Smith means, you know, you're kind of doing, you're doing some kind of work, like a blacksmith or this or that. So you're wordsmiths. Arizonans on top of it. I was just up at the forty-ninth state to join the union and we were staying in a little bed and breakfast. I went up there to preach some meetings with Brother Sean Martin. It was just wonderful to be with him and came back. When we were there, the guy said, "Well, the code to get in your room, it's, you know, this is the forty-ninth state, so just type in four-nine-four-nine and that's how you get in the room." I thought, "Well, that's good, you know, I'll remember that." We're the forty-eighth state. Right? And it's still the Wild West. Have you guys learned that yet? Yeah. Still, you know, shoot first, ask questions later. I remember when we, you know, thirty, ninety-three, so thirty-two years ago, with Sister Baker and I, I've lived in eleven states and we finally settled in Arizona. And I remember when we moved there thirty-two years ago, we were there a week. And I read in the paper, somebody pulled up to an intersection and I think it was in Phoenix and somebody came by to carjack and came and pulled out their gun. And I'm thinking, "Man, that's scary," you know? Well, the guy in the car just pulled out his gun and shot him. End of story. Welcome to Arizona. The Wild West. I never imagined that when I came out to Arizona that I was gonna see that in churches as well, you know? Come on, friends. And it oughtn't to be that way. I mean, we got along better as Baptists, you know? We'd help one another and so on and so forth as Baptists with the little bit of light that we had, you know? So I remember talking to different people and they said, "Well, you know, if you've been through as much as my pastor's been through, you know, look at, after all he's done and this is how he's treated." You know, that sympathy devil that we were hearing about last night. I wanna kick that sympathy devil in the pants. Come on, friends. It's all, what is your reality? The word is telling you what your reality is. Okay, I'm supposed to feel sorry for you. Okay. Let's see, you deserve to go to hell and you're not getting what you deserve. "Oh, I don't deserve this." You deserve hell. You deserve to die. And you're not getting it. Let's see, you're gonna live forever. Yeah, I can see why I should feel sorry for you. Right? You're gonna rule and reign. You're gonna sit with him. He's gonna scoot over and you're gonna sit with him in his throne. And you're gonna judge the angels. Right? Yeah, I see why I should feel sorry for you. You're gonna have a thousand, you can't afford a honeymoon now? You're gonna have a thousand-year honeymoon. Oh, poor, poor you. Kick that pity train out. It's so hard, you're dealing with spirits. And friends, we can become so familiar with these spirits that we don't realize that the thoughts that we're thinking are not our thoughts. I don't care, maybe you've lived with it all your life, but those thoughts are not... Listen, those devils, they're almost at the end. And they're miserable. Eternal separation. And I remember in grade school, there was always a class clown that... And I'd wonder, "Why does he get away with all this stuff?" Well, the teacher just gave up, right? He's a troublemaker and whatever. And he knew that. And so what did he do? He tried to suck in other people. Right? Misery loves company. These demons are condemned. These demons are alone. These demons, there's nothing, there's no hope for them. There's no space to repent. And they can, they can get so close to you that you think that that's you. And you take that on. But you need to realize, that ain't you. That's a demon. And you need to tell that devil, "Look, I've read the back of the book. I win, you lose. You had your chance." Amen? You need to look that devil in the eye and say, "Devil, before you were, I was. And after you are, I will be." And when your work here is done, you're a faithful worker. The wages of sin is death, so you're gonna earn that. Right? But the gift of God is eternal life. After your work is done, you're gonna go into the lake of fire. "Oh, you don't wanna go there?" "Well, I'm gonna be there." Right? "And I'm gonna be on the kicking committee." Anybody else gonna join me? You know, he's a worthy adversary. He's never missed a church service. He comes to every altar call. He'll come down, "Oh, you don't need to be down here." Friends, he's such a liar, why do we listen to him? He'll tell you, "Oh, that ain't so bad and..." "Don't be such a legalist," right? Talk you into doing something. "Not so bad." Then he pulls over in the cop car. I know there's a few cop cars around here. We've seen a lot of them. I remember back home, people, "Bah, there's a cop." So... Why should I worry? If you're not breaking the law, what's the big deal? "There's a cop." Just don't break the law. I saw some of you coming to church, no. They're waiting for you. That old... Every town has spirits. This town has its spirits too. He'll pull you over in the cop car and write you up. Then he'll take you to jail. Then he'll change his outfit, come over and say, and point his finger at you and say, "I can't believe..." And you call yourself a Christian? "I can't believe you did that." Well, he's the one that talked you into it. And now he's the accuser of the brethren? We got it, we're on to him. We need to take what the word says about us and not what he says or what we think. All right, help me out, I'm gonna pull over here in just a minute. So we wondered how anybody could come to the stature of the fullness of Christ in this evil age. All we had to do was look at our own selves, see our own shortcomings. But when the worthy one was found and he opened the book, we found out that there were no marks against us in that open book. In fact, there couldn't be any marks put against us because the book was closed. And you can't change that book because it was in the hands of the original owner. You couldn't sneak up on him in the middle of the night and write something else in there. You can't change that book. It was written before the foundation of the world. The names that were written in that book are his attributes that were chosen in him. And he said, "I chose you to be this and that and the other." How could you not be this, that, and the other? Come on, friends, think about it for a moment. People wanna make so much, such a big deal out of human choice and human will. And they don't realize, by not believing in predestination and foreknowledge, they don't realize they're making themselves God. Right? God's sitting back waiting and hoping and wondering, waiting for you to make your choice. He already made his choice. He's God. He chose you in him and you were in him and you are part of him. So let me put it to you this way. Don't answer out loud, just kind of think about it, right? Did Jesus have to go to the cross? Or did he choose to go to the cross? Well, I think both of those are true. Right? Well, how could both of those be true? He still had to choose. You still have to choose. But what choice would you make based on who you are? He found himself in the book. The book told him, "I'm the Messiah. This is my job. This is what I'm called to do. I can have a pity party." I never did finish that. Can I have just a couple more minutes? So here I am in Arizona and everybody's saying, "You know, if you've been this, that, and the other, you'd be mean and nasty like my pastor." No, they didn't say it like that, but, you know, that's why he's the way he is. Right? And I got tired of hearing that. So I just had to preach a sermon on it, you know? And I thought, you know, "Okay, I get it." Let's see, they called John a witch. They boiled him in oil for twenty-four hours and they couldn't boil the Holy Ghost out of him. They finally had enough, so they put him on this island, you know, with serpents and criminals and all that, right? And when John got off the island, he was mean and nasty, right? He's ninety years old, he's pastor of the church in Ephesus. And he says, "Beloved, let us love one another. For love is of God and everyone that loveth is born of God and knoweth God; he that loveth not knoweth not God, for God is love." Hereby know that we are his disciples, that we have love one for another. Yeah, so I get your point. I see, you know, John went through all that and he got mean and nasty. How about Paul, right? They left him for dead, they beat him, they, right? As we heard last night, so Mike, Mike says hi. Mike, my son and I, we went to Myanmar and we got to see a sea crate. You know, it's one of the most deadly snakes, a great big old snake. And you get bit by that and it's cyanara. Nice knowing you. Right? So when Paul got bit by that, they were shocked when he just shook that thing off. So we heard last night, "I don't have time for this." Like the woman that burned herself with the grease, "I don't have time for this." Right? They were just shocked because they expected him to die. They were counting, "A thousand-one, a thousand-two," and he's still breathing, you know? Hallelujah! Why am I talking about that? So Paul had been through all of this, right? They had to take him off the scene many times. He's beaten, lefered, dead. Look at how nasty he got. Mean, nasty. Right? So I get your point. How about Jesus? Right? He goes to the cross. Let's see, the ones that he was sent to, they say, "Crucify him. Let his blood be upon our head." Right? His handpicked disciples, where are they at? He tells Peter before the cop grows, "You're gonna denounce me not once, twice, three times." Right? "I don't know that Blankety-Blake guy." Right? Handpicked. Right? One of them's the devil, handpicked. The moon turned its back, the sun refused to shine, the spirit of God departed from him. So I understand why Jesus said, "I ain't dying for none of you numbskulls." If that's the way you're gonna be, you don't appreciate me. I don't deserve this. Come on, friends. Let me just submit this thought to you here tonight. Whatever is in you is gonna come out. And thankfully, if you don't like what comes out, there's time to change that. Right? Well, the devil made me do it. He can't make you do anything. Right? If you're mean and nasty and you get squeezed, guess what's gonna come out? Mean and nasty. If I took an orange tonight and I squeezed it, what would come out? Oh, that's a dumb question. Tomato juice, we know that. Watermelon juice. How do you know orange juice is gonna come out? Because that's what's in it. But if you squeeze a Christian, Holy Ghost-filled Christian, what's gonna come out? Christ. Circumstances don't make you what you are. We heard that last night so wonderfully. They don't make you what you are, they bring out what you are. Somebody say "Praise the Lord." Why don't we kick a few depression devils in the teeth? Just got through dealing with some up there in the great white north, you know, where they don't see the sun for so many, so much time and whatever. You know, these devils are real. Right? But we don't... Why are we looking at the dark side? When it's bright? Why are we discouraged when we can have joy unspeakable and full of glory in the midst of our trials? I'll put it to you this way, friends, I know what depression is. I experienced that a good part of my life, growing up. I'm done with it. Right? Hallelujah! I got joy bells ringing. Amen? I got lots of reasons to shout. Amen? Somebody say "Praise the Lord." Why would we... Why would we wanna hold on to... If there's no benefit to this walk, then why don't we find something that there is a benefit? But there is. This is the, this is the best life that there is. My best day as a sinner is not as good as my worst day as a born-again believer. Paul said, "I find, you know, the great secret to this, whatever situation that I'm in, to be content." Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." Alright, hurry up, Brother Doug. What's written in that book cannot be changed. Right? The worthy one made us worthy to take the book, to become one with it by his blood being applied to our lives, the life that was in that blood, and by the word of our testimony. The word of your testimony is the word is quickened in you. It's lived out. Now you have a testimony. It's the word that caused that testimony. You're overcoming. And now we are more than able to take a body change and to take full possession of our inheritance. Amen? There's, there are people that are gonna look death right in the face and say, "Not this time, buddy." Right? You're nothing more than a limousine right now. I don't fear you. Nobody's fear... That's, that's how God takes his children over to the other side when their time here on the earth is done and the character's built and takes them off the scene, but all you are is an escort service. But I don't need a ride this time. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. So we can't stop at the border and expect another people to cross over in our place. There's no other age coming after us. There's no other messengers. We are the possessors of that title deed. We are the people of that open book. And we have arrived again at Mount Zion like Caleb's mountain. As he said last night, you know, you had to be in the land if you were gonna be in the resurrection. Right? So you had to be buried in that land. Well, I gotta be buried in this land. I gotta be buried in Christ if I'm gonna come forth in this resurrection. Right? Imagine that, you know, as we heard last night. So Joseph said, "Don't leave my bones here" in Egypt, right? Can you imagine them boys that were tasked with carrying them bones around in a box? I, I can imagine, you know, uh, just as a human being, I can imagine, you know, after carrying them around for 10 years and, you know, they, they carried them for 40 years. I can imagine one of them might have, might have thought, "You know what? Why don't we just dump these bones and, you know, put some cloth in there, something that's lighter. What's the big deal? What does it matter?" Right? But Joseph said, "Swear to me. Swear to me. Swear an oath, you will not leave my bones here. They'll be in that land." Amen? Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." Hallelujah. So we've come to the very same place that the first church stood at. Mount Zion is the bride. She is the body, the dwelling place of the Most High in this hour. And guess what, friends? There, there's no make-believers or unbelievers in Mount Zion. Right? There's just believers. Right? We've come back to Ephesians again. And we know that the book of Ephesians parallels, uh, 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 the, in, of the New Testament, parallels the book of Joshua in the Old Testament. Uh, just a couple more minutes. One book takes a people into a place of a physical land. The other takes the people into a spiritual land. Ephesians places us into our full inheritance under a Joshua commission. We're called out of Egypt, but we, we're not just called out, but, uh, the Joshua commission calls us into our full inheritance. So we come out, but we go into something. And it has fallen our lot to do what no other age has done before. Were to stand at the very same place that the first church stood at and then go the rest of the way. And it looked as if Satan had got the upper hand over the church ages. But God's word cannot return unto him void, but it is being accomplished. And his anointing is here in this hour to quicken that promised word seed and bring it to pass. If you can receive it tonight, friends, that germ seed that's down on the inside of you is the word and was sent here for a purpose. And as our brother touched on last night, Brother Brown said at Victory Day in, uh, uh, in Sierra Vista, he said, "You know, when all hell is breaking loose, everything's coming against you." He says, "God's given you a trial." He says, "But he knows what he placed in you." And he also said he knows what bed, what season, what time that you would be planted. He says, "The message of the hour." And if you're listening, you realize you're the message of the hour. You know, the hour is so late for people fussing over what the message is. Right? There has to come a time, just as it was on the day of Pentecost, you know, they argued and fussed and, "Well, I think it's this and I think it's that and, you know, uh, you know, I, I think it's a restoration of the gifts and, you know, we, we've already cast out devils and we're already preaching and, uh, you know, let's go." And Peter said, "Hold on. Wait until..." Right? Wait until, well, how are we gonna know? You'll know. Well, when it happened, Peter got up and they said, "What is this?" And Peter said, "I'll tell you what it is. This is that. Everything we've been talking about, this is it. This is that that was spoken of. I am the manifestation of that word." Amen. I am that word. That word is becoming flesh in me. This is that. Amen. Hallelujah. There has to come a time when the people of the open book in this last hour, people say, "What, what is the message?" There has to come a time when they say, "This is that." What that was speaking of, this is that. Hallelujah. This is the word being made flesh. And it will not return unto him void. The Lord said, "I will have a people for my name's sake. And she will be without spot, without wrinkle, without blemish. She will overcome that wicked one. And I will be glorified again in her." Now, friends, we're not talking about your flesh and you, we need to quit listening to that, listening to the devil. We're talking about that thing that's down in your soul that laid there dormant, but was calling and was thirsting and hungry. And then it was quickened and it believes. You can't help it because of who you are. You'll make a harder choice, but you'll make the right choice because of who you are. Because you're a son of God, because you're a daughter of God, because you were in him, because you were made in his image. Because his image is being formed in you. Amen. And that word will do that. But we gotta quit listening to everything else and we gotta listen to what the word says. Hallelujah. So he said, "I will have a people for my name's sake." So I don't care how many men have fallen by the wayside. His truth is marching on and is becoming flesh in this hour. And, and, uh, his bride is marching to, in step to his word. And he is having the pream and it's in her. He saw her in a vision. She started to get out of step and he said, "What caused her to start to get out of step?" He said, "They were watching these other ones going off. Get your eyes off of them." He said, "Look to me," and then another place, "Look to the message. Look to the word." Hallelujah. She cannot and she will not be defeated. Because he's going before her and in her and he is fighting her battles. And he'll do whatever it takes. Hallelujah. But in order for her to be the fulfillment of the word, she first has to know who she is, where she's going. She has to find herself within the volume of the book. And she has to believe who he says that she is versus what the church says that she is or she thinks that she is. But who the word says that she is. So that sealed book had to be opened. She needed to see this last great mystery, which actually she's part of it, that's written in symbols, but was not to be revealed until the time of the, just before the body change. And it's revealing of this, it is the revealing of this last mystery to her that gives her faith or revelation needed for the body change and needed to defeat our last enemy, which is death itself. So the last messenger looked for the opening of the book. He looked for the second final phase of his message, which was the Lamb himself opening the book. And friends, all hell is raging against this message in this hour because it results in the casting down of Satan and his angels. It results in the accuser of the brethren is cast down. There's nothing for him to accuse you of. Amen. Hallelujah. In the time that the first work of redemption was being fulfilled, the Pharisees were anointed of Satan to tell the people, "Just stay with what Moses brought. There's no need of going any further. There's nothing more." And that same pattern's repeating in our day. Only this time Satan's anointing people to say, "Just stay with the cross. There's no need to go any further. There's nothing more to be fulfilled. And we should expect opposition against taking our entire inheritance." Satan is not gonna lay down and surrender, uh, in this last and great battle. He's going to try, as we heard last night, to bluff the people out of their rightful inheritance. He does not own you tonight, young people. You are not his. You have never been his child. Hell wasn't created for you. It was created for him and his angels. You're a child of God. Hallelujah. He must relinquish control of your blood-bought possessions and he must move off of your land. And friends, we need to have a scorched earth poli- policy. Right? We need to quit going down memory lane. Uh, uh, "Oh, wasn't that lovely?" No, it wasn't. You know, we, we, we got all these people dressing up as prostitutes and gunslingers and drunks and, you know, "Oh, the good old days, western days," you know? They'll go to a, a, a photo place and dress up that way. Well, if you were living back then, there was nothing good old days about it. You stunk. You were eating dirt. People are shooting you. The law was your pistol. But, but the people look back and, "Oh, wasn't that lovely?" The devil will point you back to, "Well, you, you know, we had three squares and a cot back in Egypt." Right? "We just go, go back to the Baptist church," or... Right? Come on, friends. That's Satan rewriting history. We need to, we need to have a scor- You need to burn everything off of your property that the devil can feed on. Starve them out of your land. Quit talking to them. Somebody praise the Lord. I want the fullness of the word, don't you? I want my mountain. I want all my possessions. I don't want just a portion of it. I want every bit of it. I wanna be just like Joshua and Caleb and say, "We are more than able." I wanna see the ending of our wanderings. I wanna see the possession of the full inheritance. I wanna see the manifestation of the sons of God. Somebody say, "Hallelujah." Mount Re- Mount Zion represents the resurrection of the New Testament church in her full glory. And we are a people that are going to go all, that's right there in my notes. You, that's your title. Go all the way. Amen. Can I share one more thought with you real quick? One more? Okay. The first key city in the land of, of, uh, Israel to be taken in the first Exodus was Jericho. The walls were to be torn down. They were to never be rebuilt again. Friends, there's no going back to a closed book. There's no building putting the walls back up. So those walls of Jericho, they weren't just crumbled, they were driven down into the ground. And they were told, "If you rebuild this, it'll be upon your firstborn." It will be death to do it. So, when Jericho falls, the rest of the land is open for possession. So Jericho is sealed all around and they march around the city for quietly for seven ages, no voice. Never taking possession of it. But on the seventh day, they march around it seven times in a memorial to the seven church ages, in an exposition to the seven church ages. And on their last lap, they're told, "Break the silence." There's to be a shout. The, "Break the silence," it's been over all the ages. And when the silence is broken, they're told that the walls will come down and they can possess the land. So the shout has gone forth in our day. And the seals have been taken off the book. Now the rest of the book is open. And we've come to the seventh seal and the seventh seal issues in the beginning of the ending of all things. And the seventh seal will be in effect clear up to Judgment Day. Because anything having to do with time, the seventh seal is still in effect. So it's the ending of this and the ending of that and the ending of this. There's a lot, Brother Brown said, "It's like a Roman candle." There's a lot that's under that. It, it's the coming of the Lord and so on and so forth. So we have returned to Mount Zion, the Lamb's wife, the dwelling place of God. We've come to the top of the mountain. We can see what others have longed to see. And the only way for us, the only thing that left for us is up. This is the capstone age. It's not the cornerstone age. God himself has come down to unite with the people. And there is an innumerable company of angels wherever he's at. And he is seated on the throne and he is the head and Mount Zion is the body. He gives the orders. We carry him out. He, they have his word and they know what he wants done with it. They have thus saith the Lord, or they keep silent. Hallelujah. So we now have an entrance into this land, but it's now up to us to possess it. We can't afford to drift. We can't afford to do what the other ages have done. Can't afford to relax. It's now within our grip. There's a showdown taking place between Michael and Lucifer. And people are reflecting it here on the earth. And they're reflecting their representation that's in heaven. We need to know we're not alone in this battle. There's a mighty angel. He's still here. The mighty angel of Revelation, chapter 10, Christ himself. There's an innumerable company of angels. There are people that are anointed to overcome in this age. There's a wall of fire that's about you. Hallelujah. You have nothing to fear. You have nothing to fear. Though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, we do not fear evil. Though a host shed an camp about me, I shall not fear. I have a table set before me. He has it all under control. He's either in control or he's not. He's in control of every detail. And as we heard last night, the devil needs permission to bring anything your way. And if he's bringing something to you that it's too great for you, God will say, "Put it over there on the stack. You can maybe do it later, but not now." But if you're ready for it, he'll say, "Go ahead and do it." He'll look over at Gabriel with a smile and say, "Satan's gonna get his wings singed on this one." He knows what's in you. Somebody say, "Praise the Lord." The word has declared you to be an overtime, in-time overcomer. May the Lord open our eyes to see what God is doing versus what Satan's doing. Friends, if we can be so convinced in what devil's doing, the Bible said the devil would do those things. How much more what God's doing? Amen. Amen. I'm gonna have to just go right to the end. Amen. I'm gonna read a, a quote and we'll stop, okay? Invisible Union, "He, the bridegroom, took away your shame, put it in the sea of forgetfulness by the washing of the water of the word and the blood of life." That's what the Bible said. Your first husband, the, your first husband that you were married to, the world, the anointed bridegroom which foreordained you, he set your destiny, has washed you by the washing of the water." He says, "By the church?" He says, "That don't sound right, does it?" You might that, find that in the almanac, but that's not in God's Bible. By the washing of the water, by the word. In the word, see? Friends, don't miss church. Every time you come to church, you're being washed by the water of the word. He says, "You are standing completely justified as though you never did it at the beginning." Now, friends, the real you, the gene that's down on the inside, the part of you that's gonna leave this body, this part's gonna stay here. The part that did do it, it's gonna stay here. The part that didn't do it is gonna go. That part of you was in him. You never did it to begin with. You were in him to begin. That part isn't guilty. That part of you believes. If you had, if there hadn't have been a fall, that part of you would have come forth. You never would have fell. You are a believer. But you need to believe that you're a believer. Amen. This part, we'll say, "I, I'm sorry" a few more times. But that part of you down on the inside, you believe the word of God. Amen. "You are standing completely justified as though you never did it at the beginning." This is my message to the church now. You are standing, if you're standing on God's word and with God's word, every man, eh, every amen, every jot, every tittle, where are you standing? I'm trying to tell you, pull away from them shucks. Get on out here in the wheat where you can get ripe before the sun. I can hear the coming of the combine. You are standing completely justified like you never did it in the first place. Hallelujah. You are the pure, virtuous, sinless bride of the Son of the Living God. Every man and woman that's born of the spirit of God and washed in the blood of Jesus Christ and believes every word of God, you don't have to try to believe it. You are a believer. Stands as though you never sinned at the first place. You are perfect. Friends, this is his work. He made you that way. The blood of Jesus Christ. The blood of Jesus Christ, God don't make junk. If I was supposed to die in the morning and a man took my place, I cannot die for that sin, somebody took my place. And Jesus, the word, took my place. He become me, that a sinner, that I might become him, the word. Amen. Let me hold true to it, not the church, to the word, amen. Oh, that spiritual union of Christ and his church now. When the flesh is becoming word, and the word is becoming flesh, manifested, vindicated, just what the Bible said would happen in this day, it is happening. Day by day. Why it's accumulating so fast out here in those deserts and things taking place that I couldn't even keep coming up with it. We're near the coming of Jesus, to be united with his church, where the word becomes the word. Call of the Holy Spirit searching the hearts. You're standing completely, you never sinned at the first place. God don't even know. It's in the sea of forgetfulness, you never did it. You were accused of it by the accuser, but really, from the beginning, you were predestinated to be a son or daughter of God. You're standing there washed, and your old book of divorcement is put away. And it's dead, absolutely out of existence, even in the mind of God. You are the virtuous bride of Christ, washed in the blood of Christ. Amen. Precious, virtuous, sinless, Son of God, standing with a pure, unadulterated brideword that he washed by the water of his own blood, that became flesh and manifested, that he might take you, which were predestinated in the bosom of the Father before the beginning, the same as he was. He was that great attribute of God called love. You're not that great attribute, you are an attribute. You are a portion of him. But God is God. Hallelujah, that's what's written in the book. Amen. So are we going to believe what the word says? Or that, what that lying devil tells us? Or what our senses tell us? Satan wants to focus on the fact that we got pulled out of a trash heap. But he doesn't see the hidden treasure that's buried in there. God knows who you really are. And who you really are is who you were before there ever was a fall. But you had to be brought back, you had to be redeemed in order to come back into that image. You were made in his image before you ever came forth. And he knows what it is that's in you, and he will stop at nothing until he sees that very image projecting out from you. He says, "You're mine." "You were mine when I made you, and you are mine again." "You were lost, but I came to get what was lost." If you weren't lost, then how can you be found? Hallelujah. He has made you righteous. God does perfect work, friends. Amen. Satan cannot, Satan cannot criticize God's work. And I wouldn't want to be that critic, would you? Satan can whisper in your ear, he can accuse you, but God doesn't receive it. Satan points to your past, but you need to point him to his and your future. Remind him how the story ends. Remind yourself while you're at it. He didn't write the story, God did. He doesn't get to change it. The back of the book says, "And the rest of us lived happily ever after." Hey, amen. Blessed be the name of the Lord. Blessed be the name of the Lord. Amen, let's stand. I'm gonna read this scripture, and we'll leave this with you. Paul talks about how we were predestinated, chosen in him. Then in verse 31 of Romans, chapter 8, he says, "What shall we then say to these things?" So he tells us all these wonderful things, and he says, "Now, what do you have to say?" Here's what he said, "What say you?" He says, "If God be for us, who can be against us?" I want to ask you that tonight. "If God be for us, who can be against us?" "He that spared not his own son, but delivered him up for us all, how shall he not with him also freely give us all things? Who shall lay any thing to the charge of God's elect?" It's God that justifies. You need to tell that devil tonight, "Look, devil, you point your fingers at me, you tell me whether I'm justified or not, you don't get to justify me." I don't care what you say, I don't care what you think. It's God that justifies. If he said not guilty, he makes the law. I'm gonna take what he said. It's God that justifies. "Who is he that condemns? It's Christ that died, yea, rather, that is risen again, who is even at the right hand of God, who also maketh intercession for us. Who shall separate us from the love of Christ? Shall tribulation? Shall famine? Shall distress? Persecution? Nakedness? Peril? Sword? As it is written, for thy sake we are killed all the day long, we are accounted as sheep for the slaughter; nay, in all these things we are more than conquerors, through him that loved us. For I am persuaded..." Somebody say, "I'm persuaded." "I'm persuaded." You're not talking me out of this. You came the wrong place, don't come around, don't come talking to me about that nonsense. "Oh, I don't believe this or that." Well, of course not, you're an unbeliever. But let him take a cigarette out of your mouth, let him take alcohol away from you, let him change your language. Let him give you a reason to live when you didn't want to live. Let him put love in your heart when you're bitter. Come on, friends. Let him turn you around. Let him take politics out of your heart and put the Holy Spirit in with... Politics is the devil ruling his kingdom, he put the Holy Ghost in to rule his kingdom. He's, he's changing you. "For I am persuaded that neither death, nor life, nor angels..." The devil's an angel. Demons are angels. "Nor principalities..." We battle not with flesh and blood, but principalities and powers from on high. "Nor principalities, nor powers, nor things present, nor things to come..." Boy, this is just covering it all, isn't it? "Nor heights, nor depths, nor any other creature shall be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus our Lord." And the church says? Amen, amen, let's bow our heads. Father, as we stand before your blood-bought bride once again, Lord, by faith. Lord, you said you'd give us a white stone with a new name written on it, that you would know and we would know. Father, we believe that that's the revelation of Jesus Christ to us personally. Lord, as Jacob wrestled with that angel, and Lord, your prophet told us that that angel was none other than Christ himself. Jacob wanted that birthright, he wanted it from, before he even came out of the womb, he was on a mission. There was something down on the inside that wanted that birthright. And we know that, in the natural, that he was a rascal. We know that we could find all kinds of fault in his first birth, his natural birth, but there was something down on the inside that was thirsting for that life. That was thirsting for that possession, that birthright. And we know that he wrestled and wrestled and said, "Is my name in that book? Is my name in that book?" And the angel looked to the book and said, "No, there's no Jacob, there's no supplanter who's written in the..." That name's not written in the Lamb's book of life. But he held on and held on, he thought, "I just know that my name has to be in there." And we know that he wrestled until about the break of day. And we know that the angel finally came to say, "Oh, I see, it's not Jacob. Your name is really Israel, prince with God. And it's right here in the Lamb's book, right here." That was his new name. But that's who he really was in you, down on the inside. That part that came from you, that part that you would die for, that part that would be quickened one day. That name was written in that book. Father God, as we heard last night, and I believe it with all my heart, Lord, if there are if there are people that have come to these meetings, and no doubt there is, no doubt it was the same for many of us, myself included. Where we would come saying, "Lord, I'm gonna set aside this time, and I'm gonna give this time to you, but I'm in expectation that you're gonna show something to me, reveal something to me, or you're gonna give me what you promised, and I'm gonna take you at your word, and I'm gonna give you an opportunity, and I'm gonna wait on you." Father, I want to believe that word. And Lord, we know that nine tenths of the battle is just finding that rest and that peace to take you at your word and resting in it, and then, Lord, you will fulfill that word. Not struggling with it, but taking you at your word, receiving that word. Father, if there are those that are present under the sound of our voice here tonight, as last night, Lord. Father, may they just not struggle, but may they remind you of your word. And of course, we know that when we remind you of your word, we're really preaching to ourselves. But we're reminding you of your word. You said, "If I repent," you said, "If I am baptized in Christian baptism," you said you'd give me this gift, this life. There's nothing that I can do to earn it, there's nothing I can do to persuade. It's a gift, but I have to believe it. Just like with healing, you promised, you are my healer. But I have to believe that. Lord, I pray that that faith would drop down on the inside. Father, that the struggle would come to an end. And Lord, that that rest would come, that rest that would say, "Lord, I'm gonna take you at your word, I'm gonna believe you." And Lord, we know that when that peace settles in, when that rest settles in, where we take you at your word, well, then your word will be fulfilled. So we're not looking for a certain sensation or a certain experience, I believe that in an experience, I believe that we'll know. But we're not prescribing some, we're just saying, "Lord, I'm gonna take you at your word." And then, Lord, you're gonna make it clear that we are yours, the revelation of Jesus Christ to us personally. Father, I just want to unite my faith with anyone that's, that's come to these meetings with that in their heart. Father, not just that, but, Lord, there are those that are needing healing, there are those that are needing deliverance, there are those that are needing an answer to questions, there are those that are needing hope, there are those that are maybe struggling with dark thoughts, and struggling with spirits and powers and principalities. And Lord, we, our hearts go out to each and everyone, we know that we've, we didn't join a picnic, we joined a battle. But Lord, we're here together, the licks of fire in the building here tonight. Lord, the atmosphere's been created, the... Each and every one, Lord, is in expectation. Your word has gone forth, and will continue to go forth this weekend. Father, I pray that it would be settled before going back home. That peace would drop in, that revelation would strike, Lord. And Father, we know that you will fulfill your word. We know that you will do what it is that you said that you would do. But we want to take you at your word, that's the only thing that we can do, is take you at your word. But when we do fully take you at your word, you'll fulfill your word. I pray that your blessings be upon each and every one. I pray every one of us, Lord, goes home with a spring in our step. Lord, the atmosphere last night was so tremendous, the word that went forth was so tremendous and so encouraging, Lord. And we just know that this is gonna build, and, Father, may we just go home with our shoulders back, our head held up, and recognizing that we are the finishers of the race, Lord, that there's a final leg of this race that has to be run, we're not running it on our own, Lord. But you're with us, you're going before us. But Lord, may we each one be inspired to catch that vision, as we heard yesterday, Lord. That vision has been put before us. May we see ourselves in that vision, and may we not look to the left or the right, but may we pursue that until we actually catch, walk right into it and become the very fulfillment of it. We thank you, Lord, for your love, we thank you, Lord, for your grace, your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for your tender hand. We thank you for caring about us, Lord, we thank you for the gift of repentance. We thank you, Lord, for making a way for us where there was no way. We thank you for loving us when we were unlovable. We thank you, Lord, for giving us hope when we had no hope. We thank you, Lord, for all that you've done, we thank you for keeping us all these years, Lord. And we trust that you'll continue to keep us, the work that you started, you're gonna finish. And Lord, our confidence is not in ourselves, but it is completely in you. We trust you, Lord. Father, I just pray that your blessings would continue to be with this local fellowship, Lord, as they are shining light in this place that you've placed them, that you knew that they would be, Lord. You placed a ministry and gift here, Lord, knowing that your seed would be here. Bless each and every one, Lord, bless the church, the, those that are working with the church and putting their shoulder behind this work, Lord. And Father, we, we don't want to leave without expressing our love, expressing our thanks, Lord. But Lord, just telling you that you are everything to us. And I pray, Lord, that if there's anyone that doesn't know you, that they don't leave the same way they came. I pray that each and every one of us, Lord, would, would come to know you personally, and those of us that know you personally, and we know you in a greater way. We love you, we thank you, we give you all praise and honor and glory in Jesus Christ's name. Amen, 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 God bless you.
(Singing) "Purisy is the Lamb who was slain. Holy, holy is he. Sing a new song to him who sits on heaven's mercy seat. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. With all creation I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything, and I will adore you. Open rainbows of living colors, flashes of lightning, bulls of thunder. Blessed sing in all his strength and glory and power be to you, the only wise King. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. With all creation I sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything, and I will adore you. Filled with wonder, awestruck wonder at the mansion of your name. Jesus, your name is power, with the living waters such a marvelous mystery. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. With all creation I'll sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything, and I will adore you. The brides ascending from every nation, the Lamb is calling out his own. Deep pressing higher, higher, revelations overflowing, soon will gang around the throne. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come. With all creation I'll sing praise to the King of kings. You are my everything, and I will adore you. A little girl was lying there, people all were weeping. They just laughed at Jesus when he said she's only sleeping. But then he took her by the hand, she began to live again. Some began to praise the Lord, some began to say, "He's in this house," and they had to flee. Now there is life where darkness used to be. And now there is hope, there's no more doubt. Praise his name, praise his name, 'cause he's in the house. I was like that little girl, dead in all my sin. But Jesus touched this heart of mine, he gave me life again. I am just a house of clay, but ever since that blessed day, there's a light, it shines in me, oh, this world is seen. And he's in this house, and they had to flee. And now there is life where darkness used to be. And now there is hope, there's no more doubt. Praise his name, I'll praise his name, 'cause he's in this house, and death has to flee. Now there is life where darkness used to be. And now I have hope, there's no more doubt. Praise his name, praise his name, he's in the house.
Oh, would you praise his name? Don't just sing a song, church. I'll praise your name, 'cause you're in this house, Lord. Hallelujah. I want to live the way he wants me to live. I want to give until there's just no more to give. I want to love, love till there's just no more love. Oh, I could never, ever outlove my Lord. I'm going to live the way he wants me to live. I want to give until there's just no more to give. I want to... There's no more love. Oh, I could never, ever outlove the Lord. Did you love him this evening? Let's just give the Lord a great big hand clap of praise. Amen, you know, we've been directed to the faith that was once delivered to the saints. And you know, when you recognize that, you go back and said, "Man, that age could've could've really took a rapture, except for one thing." There was the seed laying in you from before the beginning. And you know what, they couldn't have leave without you. And we can't leave without you. And we can't live, and we can't live without you. And you know, God's love is so great, so wonderful. And I'm just proud to be a Christian today. I'm proud to be in these meetings and to hear the word of God and to know the things that we know, and not just by head knowledge, but by revelation. You know, like our brother said, you know, we could hear the voice, you know, but some people hear it, but they can't hear it. And you know, but I've heard the voice and I can't unhear it. He was saying, you know, some people see, but they can't see it. But I've seen it, and I can't unsee it. You know, some people say they ate of it, but you know what? They didn't eat of it, but I've ate of it, and I can't stop eating it. So you know what? Why don't you shake somebody by the hand and tell him you had to be here tonight to hear this message? God bless you, brother. I had to be here to hear this. Wonderful, man, hallelujah. God bless you, brother. God bless you. Oh, man. You know, he was talking about another level of sincerity. And you know, it's just something that we can't say, "Well, I want to be more sincere," you know what I mean? But it's that willingness to be purged. Man, that hit me hard tonight, church. You know, how many are willing, if there's something that's not godly that's in your life, how many are willing to say, "You know what? Lord, take it away from me. Lord, you know what, whatever it is, I don't want it anymore. All I want is Jesus. All I want is Jesus." Somebody say, "All I want is Jesus." That's all I want is Jesus. Amen. Brother JR, would you come up this evening and end the service and prayer and pray for the food, brother? I know that Amariel has to get back, they got a duty to the church back home. And so we want to use them all that we can while they're here. We love you guys and appreciate you guys for coming and bringing your wives and, you know, just fellowship with us, brother.
Amen, praise the Lord. How many was fed tonight? Amen, the word never disappoints. Amen, it will fulfill. Amen, God bless you, brother Doug. Amen. Let's just bow our heads. Dear Lord, we just come before you this evening in our hearts or overjoyed, Lord, with the word that you have spoken to our hearts. Truly, Lord, it is a blessing to be a part of this family, the family of God. And so, Lord, we're here, Lord, tonight, and thanksgiving, Lord, for what you've brought us through, knowing, Father, that our future lies in your hands. And Lord, you have showed us through your word, Lord, what that future is. God, that we are overcomers, Lord, in this hour that we're living, no matter what we feel or what we see. God, we can count on your word, Lord, to hold us through. It is the anchor in our life. And so, Lord, here we are, just thanking you once again, Lord, for every worshipper, Lord, for each one, Lord, that's put their shoulder to the wheel, Lord, for the church here, this little local body. We ask, God, that your blessings, Lord, would be upon them, upon the pastor, Lord, and each one, Lord, that calls us their home church. We ask, God, that your blessings be upon them, Lord, for their efforts. We ask, God, that you just go with us now, Lord, as we would leave this place, Lord, that we would just take your holy presence with us in everything we do and everything that we say, Lord, let it be for your glory. Bless the food, Father, that's been prepared. We ask, God, that you just sanctify it, bless the hands, Lord, that have prepared it. Lord, we just give you all the glory, the praise and honor, for it's in your lovely name, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We ask these things. Amen.
Let's just thank the Lord tonight.
(Singing) "Oh, thank you, Lord, for saving my soul. Thank you, Lord, for making me whole. Thank you, Lord, for giving to me thy great salvation, so rich and free."
Church, you don't have to leave if you don't want to, but if those who want to be dismissed, you're dismissed. Just however the Lord leads you. God bless you, we'll see you tomorrow. Tomorrow, it is wear your shirt day, if you want to. If not, wear your tie, however you feel. So we'll see you at five o'clock tomorrow.
(Singing) "Making me whole. Thank you, Lord, for giving to me thy great salvation, so rich and free."
Because I want to thank you.
(Singing) "I thank you, Lord, for saving my soul. Thank you, Lord."